All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school committee meeting for April 10th, 2025. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands more than any nation.
Introduction of members.
Matt Catalano, Millville. Charles Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett, Blackstone.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Maya Gagne, Student Council President.
Jill Pillagallarani, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent. Student rep update.
So our spring sports are now in full spring with our track teams, softball team, lacrosse co-op, tennis team, and the other co-ops, all having myriad of games and practices and meets scheduled for the coming weeks. We have some new special activities during charger time that are beginning this week for the month of April with industry executives for career exploration in law enforcement, EMT and firefighting, small engine repair, and financial literacy, which are designed to be more vocational and kind of give people a peek of what career options are out there. So I am leaving my regional board position, but I have convinced one of my great friends, Julia Korenzik, to run for my spot, and she will be launching her regional campaign next Wednesday at the CDMASC conference at Oakmont Regional High School in Ashburnham. And that will be the final regional conference for the year. I have my first MASC executive board meeting on April 12th at 9:00 a.m. at the MSA building in Franklin. Mock exams are coming to an end, with the last one being tomorrow with the AP World History mock exams. And it's going to be time to start prepping for the AP exams, which start on May 6th with AP Chemistry. Tomorrow night, we have BMR Prom. It is going to be from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Kirkbread Country Club in Lincoln, R.I. But if you want to go to prom, you have to be in school until at least 10:33. So you've got to make sure to have your note if you want to leave, and you've got to stay in school until then. And that is all for today.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is our reorganization meeting. So if some of you tuning in are wondering why the superintendent's opening the meeting, it's because this is our first meeting with our newly elected school committee members. So congratulations to Carrie and Jane. And we will start the reorganization process. So we'll entertain a motion for the Chair of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District School Committee.
I'll make a motion, Dan Keefe, for Chair of the School Board.
Any discussion? Any other nominations? All those in favor? Dan, meeting is yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you for reappointing me to this position, I think. Okay, next up for the reorganization is nominations for Vice Chair. At this time, I'll open up nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Tara Larkin.
Motion made by Carrie to nominate Tara Larkin.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any other further nominations? At this time, I'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Tara Larkin for Vice Chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Next, I'll open up nominations for District Treasurer.
I'll nominate Carrie Goddett.
A motion made by Tara Larkin to nominate Carrie Goddett.
Second.
Seconded by Matt Catalano. Any other nominations? At this time, I'll close the nominations and call for a vote. All those in favor of Carrie Goddett for Treasurer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. And finally, I'll open up nominations for District Secretary.
Do we nominate someone who's not quite here yet?
I'm willing to accept a motion for Tara Scobie for District Secretary of someone who is...
Some moved.
Motion made by Tara.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chuck. Any... That's what happens when you're late. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Tara Scobie for District Secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Congratulations, everyone. And onward and upward for new school committee year. Next on the agenda is Consent Agenda. A, Warrants. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants.
Some moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And next up is the approval of minutes from March 6th, 2025, and March 20th, 2025. Motion made by Tara Larkin.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I will abstain.
And one abstention from Ms. Reggio. Do the public forum or do...
Sure.
Okay, all right. And so we just, for those of you here with us tonight, after public forum, we're going to move the agenda around just to... For a student presentation and just to move our auditors along. So we're going to take them out of order after public forum. Next on the agenda is public forum. It's your opportunity to address the school committee with any concerns or issues or positive things anyone may have. So the floor is up and open. Melanie, and you can come right up in order.
Good evening. Melanie Reyno, resident of Millville. Born and raised in this town. I did send an email earlier today to the school committee addressing my concerns with athletics. Spring athletics has been chaos. I feel the athletic director needs some help and assistance, especially what she was brought into last year. I myself took it upon... I took it upon myself, I'm sorry, to reach out to the town of Blackstone yesterday to help fix the Roosevelt Field that has been a mosh pit. The boys haven't been able to play on that field correctly, batting practice, sliding, to practice fully as a team. The town took care of it right away. These are things that need to be communicated between the district and the town for these things to get resolved. They don't have an L screen, so pitching is not done properly for these boys. Uniforms. They don't have proper uniforms. They don't have pants. But yet, the varsity does. We used to have three teams in this district: middle school, JV, varsity. Where are these uniforms that we used to have? How often are they purchased? Things we need to look at for the children. We want these children to succeed. We want them to be athletes. If we want them to stay in this district, it's fair that they get everything. Game schedules. There's three different schedules. There's Arbiter, there's the school website, and then there's Sports U. Three different schedules on every site. As a parent who works full-time, who has more than one child that does other activities, trying to manage and get them from one place to the other, it's stressful. Very stressful. A game which is added for tomorrow, fine. But again, things need to be more structured. And if she needs help, we've got to get her that help, please. I want to be able to keep my second child in this district. He's only sixth grade. I'd like to see him stay here. He's a great athlete. A lot of people on the school committee know who he is and how good he is as a player, and I'd like to see him continue in sports. He came home tonight. He didn't play because we took varsity kids down to play on JV. So he sat there. He's been practicing for three weeks, didn't get a second of playing time. So why do we have two teams versus three? Because baseball is the only sport... I'm sorry, basketball was the only sport that we had cuts in. There's 20 kids, I think, on the varsity team, and I think there's 14 on the JV. Plenty of kids to have three teams to give every kid an opportunity. It's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you guys get going, I'll just ask you to say your names. Identify yourself for the record.
Maya Gagne.
Ella McCourt.
Izzy Goddett.
I'm Kyla Moore. Okay, hi, everybody. Thank you for having us tonight. We are all juniors over at the high school. We are enrolled in AP classes. We are captains of sports teams. We lead STUCO. We're NHS members and so on. So in our position as student leaders, we wanted to come here and use our student voice to share some of our concerns about the new cellphone policy that's being piloted this spring.
So for us, like, at the end of the day, the true purpose of high school is not necessarily to further someone's education, but more so to teach them how to be prepared for the real world through that furthered education. We feel with this new cellphone policy that there is a lack of real-world preparedness. The students are not being taught how to be self-responsible. If I sit down and I go, "All right, well, I can either scroll through Instagram for 25 minutes, or I can get my worksheet done." If I don't get my worksheet done, I'm not going to pass the class. I fail the class, I don't graduate high school in a set. But when you take that ability of choice away from the students, they don't have the ability to learn that your actions do have consequences and that at some points, you do need to say, "All right, I need to put this distraction away, and I need to be able to get what I need to get done." And then, as they move into the real world, as they move to college, as they move to their jobs, no college lecturer says, "All right, everybody, put your phone in the box. We're having a lecture." It's either you sit there and you pay attention, or you miss out on the material. And same goes with any job. No one goes around, "All right, everybody, turn in your phones." It's either you get the work done or you get fired. And we just feel that with this, the students aren't being taught how to be self-responsible. They're not being taught how to be self-motivated, and it's just setting them up for failure.
And it seems that in this proposed policy, we are disciplining every single student in the high school for a couple of kids that just won't behave with their phones. We all do our work. We all like to have our cellphones, but we're not the type of kids who are just going to sit on them all day. We're not coming here from a standpoint of, "Oh, we want to use our phones to scroll on TikTok during AP Lang," during AP Lang, for goodness sakes, as well. But we find that this is disciplining everyone, like a group punishment. So like, one kid misbehaves at lunch, everyone has silent lunch. We see this as kind of a silent lunch for everyone. And we also find that this is so much more than just a tool for distraction. This can be an educational tool. There are so many classes where you have to use your phone to really do the class. We offer virtual high school classes at BMR. And there are instances where you have to take a picture of your work and upload it and submit it. And if you do not do that within 10 minutes, that your assignment gets erased, and you're not able to submit it, and it gets marked late. So phones can also be an educational tool as well. The amount of times where I see kids with headphones in during study so they can focus or listen to music or have something else in there so they can better pay attention or so they can better learn the material through their cellphones is very often, especially in our cases.
One specific concern we did have was about safety. We've had a couple lockdowns throughout the years for kids with medical emergencies. Specifically, I think, our freshman year, there was a kid who fainted. And 911 got called by a student who picked up their phone and took that initiative. And unfortunately, with school shooter threats, really, just to say it plainly, that is a concern. And having our phone in our pocket or in our bag versus up in a box in the front of the classroom is precious seconds that we can't afford to not have. And although it is unfortunate to try and plan policy around a what-if, it's a really common what-if that we really can't ignore.
We also just want to bring your attention back to when we had yonder pouches at the middle school and just see how that went over. It ended up only lasting a couple months because of, you know, the logistic difficulties for administration. And us high school students have a lot of other factors going on in our lives outside of school. We have jobs. We play in sports. We drive cars. Things that require us to use our cellphones. So it's not... If it didn't go over well at the middle school level, how were we expecting it to go over better at the high school level?
Yeah, schools do not buy all of their students' cellphones. Cellphones are students' personal property. So when the administration is taking them all away, even if it's for increments of time, that creates a liability on the administration. For one, today, we were test-driving this in our Spanish class, and Kyla accidentally picked up my phone. That one's an accident, but that presents the issue of people can steal people's phones. If someone's going to the bathroom and doesn't get back before the end of class, and their phone is left there, and that box is wide open, some kid can easily pluck their phone, steal it, sell it on eBay, and make a buck. No, I'm serious. That's an issue. And that also presents the fact that what if the teacher were to drop the box and the cellphones were to be broken? Who pays for the cost of the cellphones? Who is liable for that? And what if the students, like, break their phones while they're putting it in the box, or the box somehow damages a student's phone? This week, during the test drive of this process, we actually had a freshman student whose phone case was broken due to the cellphone box.
We also, in any policy that is made, we believe that there should be student voice. We advocate for student voice all of the time. But when it comes to decisions being made, they're being made for us and not with us. At this point, we are old enough to make genuine thought and contribute to conversation in a positive and meaningful way. And when policies are being made, we need to be included. There is nobody in that high school that understands what that high school is like better than the students to experience it every single day. All we ask moving forward is that students are included when policies are made so that we can have that interaction and that understanding of what it's really like.
Speaking of student voice, we had our vice principal, Mr. Ducharme, come into our Spanish class, one of the classes that is piloting these phone boxes. And he told us that he was aware of plans for next year to be removing phones from study periods that kids currently, they can do whatever they want during study within reason. You can scroll on your phone. You can do your homework. It's your choice to be productive or not. But Mr. Ducharme told us that, from his awareness, from what he had heard, that may not be an option next year, that study may be taken away as a time to use our phones. A big concept that Mr. Ducharme especially has pushed up the high school is our time, that there's breakfast, lunch, charger time. Study is our time to go on our phones, talk with friends, do whatever we feel like doing. And then there's your time, staff's time, administration's time to teach. And study has always been presented as one of these our times where we make the choice to be productive, to do something that's good for us or not. And I really think that this idea of taking away study, taking away phones from study, I really disagree with it because I think it is taking away the need for students to make the choice themselves to be productive. Because I need to be able to make myself focus on work. And sometimes I can't. Whether I'm going to scroll on Instagram or do a coloring page, if I know I'm not in the headspace to focus, I'm not going to be able to focus, phone or no phone. But sometimes, I come out of my AP classes, I come out of Spanish, these difficult classes, and I just need to turn off my brain and scroll on my phone for a bit. And that's an option, that having the privilege of study. We have the privilege, but also the responsibility, to make that choice.
Yes, we know that there is an issue, a cellphone epidemic, so to say, within all of the schools where kids are using their phones where they're not supposed to. And they are getting distracted in their coursework, and something needs to be done. But I'd like to bring up the concept of equality versus equity. Not one solution isn't going to fit every single kid in that high school. All kids are different. Not every kid is addicted to their phone. There are a lot of kids, kids like us, who rely on our phones for communication and as an educational tool. So we can't have a one-size-fits-all solution in this issue. And we do not believe, because of that, that this policy is a good fit for our school because of the fact that it inhibits kids who aren't even part of the problem. It actually creates more problems because we would have to find workarounds across our normal study habits. I normally have my AirPods in so I can tune out my surroundings, so I can focus. What am I going to do now? It creates more problems for the kids who aren't part of the problem. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on, hang on, one second. Are we... We're just going to leave it at that for now? Okay, well, you guys are a testament to the education here at BMR with that presentation. I mean, that was phenomenal. Whether people may agree or disagree with certain points, I just noticed that you guys were seamless. You did an amazing job. I couldn't help but notice, though, you all referenced your phones while giving... So to give you just a view into the future, that if you're sitting here making policy and things like that, if you look in your phone when you're making policy sitting up here, people in the public can request what you're looking at on your phone. So just a heads up in the future. But you guys did a tremendous job, and I commend you for that. And there's a reason why you guys are in leadership, and you've shown us here this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
All right, anyone else for public forum? Okay, we're going to just skip down to the report of the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent, the middle-of-year data.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm going to ask Mrs. Foulas and our high school team to come forward to our committee and to our community tuning in. At our last school committee meeting, we heard our middle-of-year data presentations from Millville Elementary and from our middle school. And as promised, the high school team is here tonight with members, additional members of their student leadership and a member of the school's instructional leadership team, the content leader for our English department, Ms. Robarge. And so, welcome, ladies. Thank you so much for being here.
Our all-female team here.
Yes.
Power. Yes, power and force.
And they're going to walk us through high school's middle-of-year data this evening.
They have that. All right.
Do you have the clicker over there?
No, we don't. That's okay. I'm really bad at it anyway.
That's okay. Let me grab it.
Here we go. We got it.
Tim's got it.
I know, but, Tim, I'm really bad at the clicker.
I forgot to...
You can do the clicker. You do the clicker. You make sure.
All right, do I introduce her?
Yeah, why don't we start with introductions?
I'm Chloe Maloney. I'm a sophomore.
Jill Foulas, Principal of the high school.
Hillary Robarge, English teacher.
Ivy Maloney, eighth grader.
All right, so we're going to start with the ELA data. So you can see our eighth, ninth, and 10th grade data up on the screen here. The majority, we're seeing we still have some work to do, right? So in our, across all three grades, you can see that those two lower categories of not meeting and partially meeting are still holding too many for us and like where we would like to see. So we really want to start to push. We see small jumps between the not meeting to the partially meeting. But we really want to see more of that push from the not meeting into partially meeting. But then, on the flip side of that, in that exceeding expectations, there are a good chunk of our students that are sitting contentedly in that meeting expectations. So we want to find ways to be able to push those kids as well into those exceeding expectations. Two things that we've seen across the board when we're looking at the data in terms of what skills are they really starting to struggle with or they tend to struggle with, vocabulary is one of them. So a lot of the STAR questions will have something to do with vocab. But the other one has to do with author's purpose. And when they're talking about author's purpose, it's a higher-order thinking skill of going beyond just, you know, what does the text say? And answering those low-level questions. But the author's purpose piece requires a little bit more of that inferencing that we're really trying to focus on in all of our classes from eighth through 10th grade. We can see also... This is our special ed data for ELA as well. Kind of the same idea, right? We're seeing a lot of the not meeting, the red and the yellows hold the majority of those kiddos. And we really want to see them pushing into that blue, that meeting expectations, and then higher. For the SGP, we're not where we want to be in all the categories. We really want to hit that 50 mark or higher. So in some of them, we are. You'll see in our ninth grade, those students seem to be progressing where we want them to be. Our 10th grade is where we need to focus our attention the most in terms of getting them to make that progress, to make those jumps from one level to the next. For ELA, so the author's purpose piece, when it came to looking at those skills that they're lacking in or they tend to struggle with, it kind of led us into focusing on the writing piece with literary analysis because that's what they have to do. It's more of an analytical writing where students are asked to make inferences about what the language is telling them. So looking at literary elements such as diction, foreshadowing all these different pieces, and then taking it one step further to not just identify those things, but then to also explain what is the author trying to show? What message are they sending us through their language? So that's something that we've been really focusing on. We've had a little bit of progress in their writing growth when it comes to that. Again, STAR doesn't necessarily have the writing component, so we wanted to make sure we were adding that in with another assessment. But a couple of things that we're actually adding into to really, like, push this even further. A lot of their warm-ups now are geared towards specific literary analysis. So they'll get a prompt, and they have a quote that we're giving to them. And they then have to take that and in a 10-minute span, at least a couple times a week, they're practicing that skill. Um, we're also putting in to practice that tier-two intervention. Um, I know this past week I had a group of boys that might not have been super happy to spend charger time with me, but we sat down and we did some literary analysis during charger time. Um, and we worked through the process together, we looked at the quotes, we looked at the language, but the, the group that I saw struggling the most, we're gonna take them back during charger time and really focus on where are we struggling and how can we make sure we're doing this the right way in the future to kind of push them further with literary analysis. I kinda just went through all of that.
That's okay. Um, why don't, while you're, while you're looking at that, do you wanna speak first to English before we go to math? And so, some of the things you're doing, we have eighth grade and 10th grade, to just talk about what you're doing in the skills in math, in English.
So, right now, um, I know this week we had a test on, we've been looking into the Holocaust, and we've been reading a bunch of survivors' poems and like writing about sharing their stories. So the test and essay we had to do this week, we had to write about the connection both authors made to sharing their story and not letting people forget about the horrible and, the horrible effects of the Holocaust that had on people. So in our essay, we had to compare and pick quotes from both poems and excerpts and compare them and to like try to find the common theme and the message they were trying to get out to the audience.
I'm in AP seminar, so it's not a conventional English class, but we've been working on developing persuasive writing skills, and right now, we're putting together an individual writing assignment, which goes towards part of the end of the year, like college board grade. And we've just been analyzing sources, um, checking credibility, putting it all together to form an argument, and finding different perspectives and lenses to locate one issue through.
And they're working really hard in that class.
Really, really hard.
It's a great English class. Really excited to have that.
Part of math.
Yes, go next. All right, so math. Um, so math is in two different, um, phases. So we have the STAR testing like we have, we have where, um, math for eighth grade, they have the HMH, which is their curriculum, so they have their, um, testing there. So what you're seeing in this data is the, um, different five categories for HMH versus four categories for STAR. Um, we're seeing, you know, we're at the 60/40 as far as actually on-grade level. Um, we're in the 60%, with, um, uh, on-grade level and above, with that 21 nice sitting there, ready to do some work and, and move, but as we know, it could go either way. We're moving in the right direction. You wanna see the minus in the red and the yellow and the growth in the, um, blue and the green. Um, so that's where we are for, for eighth grade, and you'll speak to a little bit what we're doing in eighth grade shortly. For, um, Algebra I and Geometry in our ninth and 10th grade, this was the first year we're piloting, I would say piloting, 'cause we're learning a lot as we go along, um, a different type of assessment. This is a, they're still using our curriculum, the SABIS curriculum, to create these, um, questions, but the exams themselves are all teacher-level, and it's all on-grade level. So this is all content that is in the standards. Versus STAR, sometimes it can drop and you can be, it's depending if you get an answer wrong, then you go into this category, and this bucket, and this bucket, and this, this is all on-grade level. And the one thing that we did here that I just wanna note is that from each, one of the biggest things is, you know, you forget what you learned at the beginning of the year, and you, so we need to learn, we need to go over that. And so, the three, um, pieces that you see, the three topics that you have here for Algebra I, but also in the geometry slide, those are the, um, standards that, um, were touched upon in Term I, and now they're seeing it again in Term II and in Term III. Um, they're just reviewing that, that data in Term III right now. So we are seeing that we're able to do either via through intervention or through repetitive do-nos, where we're gonna bring those skills back and build on that. Um, we are seeing growth. We still have, again, same thing with English. We got a long way to go, we've got places to go and people to see as far as math is concerned, but, um, we were starting to have that conversation because we do have math MCAS coming up, and so we're gonna be looking at the math boot camp that we've done in the past, uh, last year, we're doing that in the review, um, and just wanting to make sure that we continue to push the rigor and the, and the critical thinking. Um, I think I'll, uh, have you both talk about what you do in math, and then I'll kind of wrap everything up. So what do you, what, what's, what's math like for you?
So, um, I'm in Algebra I, and we've been working a lot on like MCAS prep and things that are gonna be on MCAS in the future and in this year. So, we usually do like active things to get our minds working in the morning, or like in the afternoon when we've been sitting in classes all day. So we walk around and there's usually like, I know my favorite thing to do is the station work, but they have different problems up on papers around the room, and we get to go on our own with clipboards and solve them, like with a partner usually. And it's really easy to work in groups, because it's, you can get two people's opinions and you don't end up getting everything wrong, if you don't understand the topic, and you can get different opinions from each side. And it, we've also been taking a lot of notes, which as I know, is something I haven't been doing in math before in previous classes, and we've been taking notes at the start of every topic and like going through examples and writing how to do it correctly in your notebook along with the teacher. And I think that's really helpful because to study, which I usually, I used to be confused on how to study for math tests, but it's easier to sort of like rely back on my notes and know that these problems and their answers are right, because we went over them with the teacher, and I find that really helpful.
Okay.
Um, I'm in geometry, and my class is like both freshmen and sophomores, since it's a step away from Algebra I, which we took before. And we've been mostly working with like, it's like collaborative kind of, 'cause we'll have whiteboards around, like on the different walls around the classroom, and we'll just have to like show our work. It's the same questions for everyone, but we have to show how we got there, which I feel like is helpful, because some kids, like if you do it in your head, then you don't remember how you got there and how you solved that certain problem. And just seeing the ways that other people solve problems like differently, it, it might be easier for some people as well.
Love that.
Jill, before you wrap up, can I just do a quick, like a 30-second explanation?
Yeah, I was gonna do that too, yeah.
If you're listening, um, to the different types of assessments that we're doing and you're, and you're curious about that, um, as just kind of a refresh, last spring, we had students, um, and members of our school-based instructional leadership teams and principals talking to the school committee a little bit about our assessment system, and us kind of making some quarter turns in terms of how we were approaching that. So, uh, as just a reminder, STAR is that adaptable test. So it's in-the-moment feedback to the student as the student is getting the, you know, as they're reading the passages and getting the questions right, it's gonna actually ramp up the level of complexity of the text the kids are reading. Um, and we used to have a similar assessment that we use for mathematics, it did the same. So not only would it show, uh, the students, staff, and parents, you know, how the, uh, the, the level in which, uh, students are reading on as far as their lexile level, their grade level, um, but it also showed him, uh, showed us their, their independent and their instructional reading levels. So you may say, you know, the results might have said, we have a eighth grader who's reading at a 12th grade reading level, um, and as an independent level, but their instructional level might be, you know, 10th grade or 11th grade. So we get a lot of feedback from that piece. What we did different, and we kept that for ELA, but we added a writing component, so we could actually measure their progress in writing. Um, what we did different, uh, this year in mathematics, uh, actually is a, is a kind of, is a little variation at each of the different grade levels. Um, and so we heard from the elementary and middle school the last time, but, um, for today, at the eighth grade level, we're using, uh, what we call HMH, which is just the name of our, the publishing name for our math program, Into Math. And so, at eighth grade, the students are taking essentially their diagnostic test, and so it's that set of skills that they need to master by eighth grade, and they're taking that essentially, uh, kinda similar test, measuring the same standards across the year, so we can see the growth on those grade-level standards. So it's not an adaptable test at all, it's actually fixed. It's saying here are all the things you need to know by the end of eighth grade, and then we're slowly measuring the progress as you go, which was why you saw some pretty big gains in eighth grade as far as kids moving over to the, um, on-grade level or above-grade level categories, because we're measuring those grade-level standards multiple times. So you can actually see the kids mastering those as they move throughout the year. Um, that's a really different type of, uh, assessment than an adaptable test, that is actually measuring students' real-time abilities in that moment. The other piece that, uh, Jill and the team were discussing at the Algebra I and Geometry level is actually different. And so, uh, what we're doing at that level is, after our first kinda diagnostic and looking at where the students, uh, fell at each of those courses, 'cause again, it's course-specific, it's kinda less grade-specific and more course-specific, is here are the power standards that the students are gonna see, Jill mentioned this, like repeatedly, they're gonna kinda spiral back to. Here are those key power standards, and they're listed here, exterior angle theorem, uh, parallel and perpendicular lines, and, uh, transversals. So, these power standards that kids are gonna keep coming back to, so we keep assessing on these standards, not only because the curriculum is cycling back to them, but the students in their, um, either their, um, they call them, uh, station rotation, or some of their centers, um, the teachers are working on these standards repeatedly. So, we should see, uh, additional mastery as, again, as we continue to assess them quarterly. We actually have our Q3 assessments, uh, coming up that we're looking at with our math department.
Look at the data.
Um, and reviewing the data with them in upcoming, uh, professional learning community meetings. So, I just wanted to put that little plug in, because it is different. Um, and I remember the, you know, having the discussion with the committee that we're trying some different things this year to make our, our assessment, uh, far more meaningful to our kids and to our staff, so.
Yeah, and it's been a challenge, because we don't have, we've got, as I said, we've got 25 pages of data for each class and trying to figure out what that means instead of having a report, it would've, you know.
STAR, you can hit a button, get a report.
Yeah, we like the report.
Are you doing this for science, too?
We are, just for math and.
Just for math and ELA.
Yep, right now, just for math and, um, and ELA, although math, the science department does have a team goal as well. But, no, and, uh, you know, I will say, uh, just to give a shout-out to, um, our 10th graders, um, and our eighth graders, I know the vote for the state that MCAS was not part of the graduation requirement. I had several conversations with people after the first day that, um, didn't quite put the effort in that they could have, but I, it was nice to see that on the second day they were. Um, we did have 100% of our 10th graders take the MCAS and show up and do that, and our eighth grade as well. We've got math coming up, we're taking it very seriously. It's, uh, still there for scholarships, it's important to get the feedback from, um, our, our students. Uh, you need a, you need a passing, uh, grade on that if you wanna get the seal of bili literacy, which is a growing piece in our district as well, so, um, that's all really important, and, uh, I'm really proud of the, the work that the students are doing. Um, I'm really proud of the reflective nature of my teachers, the staff, they, they saw numbers that they were like, "All right, let's, let's get in and let's get to it," and, um, and, you know, pu- pushing the rig, the rigor. We were, we did a learning walk today with our students who are saying, "We wanna think, we wanna give us opportunity, more opportunities to really think critically." Um, and I think between these six young women that we saw today, um, you can tell I'm a very proud principal of the building, and good things are happening, so, thank you. Any questions?
I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and, and Ms. Fowler's told me this evening that, uh, she still had to, uh, find a prom dress.
Yes, I do.
So remember that, as our student representative said, you have to be in school till at least 10:30.
And 10:30, and they all know, they get called.
Oh, 33.
10:33, and they get called down, and then, uh, we have two lists, and then we highlight them, and then we release them to go get their.
Mr. Superintendent.
You know, the boys get their hair done.
Yes.
Make sure she doesn't go dress shopping before 10:33 tomorrow.
You're right on it, Ms. Fowler.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to, uh, we're gonna jump over to the business office, FY24 audit review.
Good evening. I'm Bob Brown, and this is Sean DeSorci. We've been doing the audit here for four or five years now, I believe. Uh, the audit went well, the audit opinion we give is a clean opinion, um, uh, not, um, unmodified, I call it. Um, it's a large financial statement package, um, uh, I just wanted to walk through a couple of the statements. There's actually three distinct sets of statements in this package. Page 19 has a statement and net position for fiduciary funds. Uh, fiduciary funds in this district are post-employment benefits trust fund and private-purpose trust funds. The page after it is a revenue expense for that, for those two funds. Uh, this is the only place this information appears. And then, going forward, page 14 has a, a balance sheet for what we've referred to as the fund-level funds, kind of on a cash basis. It has a general fund, which is similar to how the district would report, um, to DSE, uh, financial information. Outside of the general fund, all the other funds, special revenue grants, revolving funds, gift funds, capital projects, get combined into a non-major fund, they condense it. If there's one activity that constitutes 10% of assets, liabilities, revenue expenses, we have to break it out as a major fund, and in this case, there's a capital improvements fund, uh, that is broken out separately. This is pretty much cash basis, it doesn't have fixed assets or OPEB liability or pension liability, um, so it's, it's prepared on a different basis. This statement then is the, the, the starting point for the full accrual financial statements. These numbers are taken and modified, um, for full accrual adjustments, which result in a statement and net position on page 11. Um, this statement is just all the, um, prior statement combined in, but then add in, uh, bonds payable, pension liability, post-employment benefits liability, accrued interest, fixed assets, um, uh, very large full accrual adjustments. The, on page 11, the, uh, total fund net position is in a negative $23 million. Um, most governments are in the negative, because current accounting standards require that you put your entire pension liability with the county in your financial statements, and as well as the post-employment benefits liability in your financial statements. About 10 years ago, these numbers weren't in here. Uh, they were being phased in, and then they decided no more phasing in, the whole liability hits the books. It doesn't, didn't affect bond ratings, because bond raters always knew those liabilities were there, even though they weren't in the statements. How it affects your bond rating going future is how you fund those liabilities. Uh, the county liability, you're in a county system with everybody else, so you're funding it in a structured manner. Post-employment benefits is different, each government's doing it on their own. So eventually, there could be bond rating differences, depending on how one government funds their post-employment benefits trust fund as opposed to another government. Uh, the audit went well, there was, there were no actual audit adjustments to, to note out, uh, speak of, and, uh, uh, Joe's doing a good job, and, uh, we look forward to next year. And, if you have any questions, I'm, you're here to answer whatever they may be. I didn't have a cellphone in high school.
But you wanna be an educator in 21st century and?
I think I was 28.
The, the total liability for the OPEB is 9,8, 9,800, is that what you have there?
Oh, it's more than that. 30 million.
Post-employment, rela-, oh, sorry, related to post-employment?
30 million, 362.
Yeah. Maybe a couple above that.
Page 11.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Oh, yeah, okay. I saw the other related to post-employment.
The net liability for both OPEB and pension essentially stayed the same. Uh, there was not much change for the whole year. Um, when you look at the number, you have to also take into account, there's a deferred inflow and a deferred outflow, tho- those change as well as the, the liability number. So, the net of all those, um, for OPEB just changed $729, which was not a great plus, 'cause we contributed 100,000. Page 20 shows the activity for the post-employment trust fund. We contributed 100,000 and had net investment income of 27,000, and employee contributions of about 18,000.
You'll, we'll see that number continue to, all of our employees contribute from their, uh, salaries to OPEB, so, yep. You'll see that change over, over time.
Got a question?
Oh.
Sorry. Was that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. You, you already got started.
Sorry, Dan.
Yeah.
Um, that number for, uh, OPEB was higher before, wasn't it?
Yes.
And how did, how does that get reduced?
We, uh, well.
Which is great to contribute.
Yeah.
Well, the district did start, uh, an OPEB trust fund that started contributing, contributing to it. I don't recall how many years you've had that trust fund going, but.
It's a three.
Three years, yeah.
At least four, three or four.
How long have you, reveal last year?
Four, so, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, would be the fourth, fourth year, this town meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And we negotiated with all of our bargaining units for them to contribute, and all the administrators contribute.
Yeah, so, I think the combined towns would be doing about 100, the towns, the district was doing about, has been doing about 50.
Yeah, the district, when, uh, when E and D comes back, certified, if the money's there, the school committee moves that in, and then the employees contribute close to 20,000 a year from their salaries.
And so this will be.
So we're all putting, everybody's putting in, yeah.
And so this will be the third, at least the third year of the district, the 50,000, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so the towns put in, will be 300,000, another 150 from the district, and probably another 60 from the, from the te- employees.
Fair enough, thank you.
All right, any, uh, any other follow-up questions? So we have a good report, Card?
Yep.
All right, no findings, that's.
We can let, that's.
No findings is, yeah.
Pretty good, actually.
Yes. No finding is always a good finding.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, okay, back on track to the agenda, school committee, MSBA update.
Dr. DeFalco?
Defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, just very briefly, um, we have, um, our next meeting on April 23rd, and that's an important meeting. During that, uh, school building committee meeting, we will be reviewing what is called, you'll hear, called a PDP, but it's a preliminary design proposal or plan. Um, and, uh, essentially, it's a very high-level sketch, um, of, um, kind of a, of a, I don't wanna say it's actually a design of what is being offered, uh, as far as what will, the feasibility study will result in, but it actually takes a macro look at the different grade configurations that are being studied, but from the perspective of, you know, square feet, um, special education classes, general education classes, you know, cafeteria space, uh, it's a very high level of, you know, uh, what the different configurations might look like. I would argue the piece that's probably equally, if not more important than that, is the education plan. So the education plan is being worked on right now, and that plan really captures essentially the vision of where the high school is going next. So you are gonna see things like our pathways and the expansion of that work that's happening now, uh, laid out in that, uh, section of the, uh, PDP, if you will. Uh, you're gonna see the high school, uh, draft schedule, um, you're gonna see the, uh, portions of the middle school in there. Because you remember, the design that was submitted, uh, at least in the statement of interest, was a 6 through 12, but we're studying 6 through 12, 7 through 12, 8 through 12, 9 through 12 renovations, uh, the renovation addition, new construction, there's so many different, uh, models. So it's a very comprehensive document, that all needs to be submitted to the MSBA. Um, the piece that's a little kind of wonky about the process is, uh, if you talk to the architects about this, and we're all in agreement, that really should come at the end of the feasibility study. Because that's, that's really when we're putting forward, uh, what the actual design should be. It feels a little... It feels a little bit of kind of cart before the horse, or whatever that expression is, to be doing this piece now, because we're looking at so many different grade configurations, and we're looking at so many different types, whether it's addition, renovation, new build, it feels a little backwards. But, that being said, we're taking the education visioning work that we've done, that we talked about in the last meeting, and we are integrating that into the education plan as well. So the school committee will have that document at our May meeting, and the school building committee will have it on April 23rd to review before submission to MSBA. So, quick update there.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Next up, Millville Elementary, water update. I get a feeling that the town of Millville has some good news on this matter they received today.
Hi, thank you for having us. Should we introduce, I'm Jennifer Gill. I'm still chairwoman, actually, of the Board of Selectmen because some people didn't get sworn in before the meeting.
Details, minor details.
Minor details.
Swearing in, swearing out, yeah. Richard Remmels, how are you all?
You're still, oh, no, you're not vice chair.
Oh.
So we got our update on our grant application today, which is great. So we are approved for the $1 million. So on Monday, we'll be getting an email with a packet to fill out, and then that's it. And then we start buying stuff. And we met literally yesterday with our water operator about the equipment that is needed, and they already have a supplier lined up, and they're just waiting for the phone call that, yes, we're going to buy this. So it should move very, very quickly once the money is in the account. And I brought the email, and it just says, and it's actually big enough, I don't need to put my greeters on, it says, "Good afternoon, our Boston drinking water program received approval from EPA today of your grant award in the amount of $1 million. I expect you to receive the grant application forms from the Boston office email on Monday. Thank you for your diligence in pursuing this funding to continue providing treatment of the drinking water at the Millville Elementary School. Congratulations, and please let me know if you have any questions." So, it's been a long road.
We're jeans, bag of money.
Yes.
She came, she said if I can bring a bag of money in next meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if there are any questions?
Yeah.
I did bring the email in case anyone wanted it. For their records, I printed off a couple copies, but I think Peter also forwarded it. Okay, so you have it already too, okay.
I'll forward it along, yeah.
I didn't actually forward it yet, I'm sending it after your.
Oh, thank you. But at least you have a copy, Dr. DeFalco, so that everyone else can see it if they want.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that work.
It's work.
Yes, it was a long time.
Is there any questions?
I guess I just, what is the timeline, or will we, when will we have a timeline?
So the, as I mentioned, so yesterday I spoke with the water operator, they basically have a vent supplier waiting to sell the equipment. And then there is a pilot study, because this is the first time we're using this type of equipment in Massachusetts, so Millville will actually be groundbreaking for water operations in the space. They're using the same equipment for the same type of issue in New Jersey, I know, in New York, I believe. And it's just a chemistry issue. So basically, the water that we're pulling from the well seems similar to surface water. And so this apparatus will work on the iron, the manganese, the total organic carbons, and PFAS. So we'll actually be quite ahead in terms of the requirements for PFAS and water at the Millville Elementary School. So, and that's, it's only like a one or two-week pilot study, I can get you exact details, Tara. It's fast, which I was surprised, because nothing with this has been fast. But yeah, so it should, once we get it installed, it's like 30 days, basically, end to end, is my understanding, and I'll verify that and send an email to Dan and Dr., Mr. Chairman and Dr. DeFalco, so you guys will know.
Thank you. I guess it's just, I don't have the notes in front of me, from we've gotten really deep on how this all worked, but just as a matter of results, so that we can make decisions on.
So when you say the pilot study is one to two weeks, they're expecting at the end of the pilot study, the results to be.
Yeah, good.
Positive. Wow, that is quick.
Yeah.
And then there'll be, what, monthly results that we'll track, or how?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we do monthly testing now?
Yep.
And then, and then there's one number that they do, that's the quarterly test.
All right.
So I've been essentially meeting with the chairwoman and Peter.
Monthly, I'd say, at least.
Yeah, at least every six weeks or so, yeah. And so, and they've been very upfront with your current water operator kind of waiting for this, so the, there was, you guys weren't, they weren't heavily maintaining the current system, knowing that, you know, it was just chasing the tail because this was coming. So some, most, some of the recent results may not look, well, look.
The results for March are much, much better, because I told them that we need to maintain the water operations, like that's what we're paying them for. So I know it might be more work now, but this is what the contract is. So they kind of stepped up, so March is better. I don't remember the exact numbers, I don't have them in front of me, and then they just did a water test recently in April too, and they expect that to be a lot better too. So they should be coming back down, but this is going to just take care of all that.
The issue has never really been cleanliness, it's been consistency.
And, and, so you, yeah, so you have the, the water, it's going to be the same water operator?
Yep.
I mean, and, and this also helps you, and, you know, you had to increase your water operations budget.
Mm-hmm.
And so this helps you actually this year with that operations budget, because the grant allows you for the operations with this new, this new type of technology. So that's, it's a, it was a good day, good news for the Millville budget today.
I know, I can't believe when Peter, when Peter texts me, it's like, hey, we have the email, I'm like, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
So, because she said, you can ask me every day, and I did ask her every day starting this week, I'm like, you said? So I'm checking in.
I only ask once every week or two, if I'm going to ask you. We do appreciate the, we've come a long way in the last year and a half with, from beavers to a million bucks, it's a pretty good turnaround, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
So, and so you guys have voted on supplying bottled water.
Yep.
Until this, this thing, this operation.
For all of next year, if you want.
Yep, so it's fully up and running. And you guys are already committed to that.
Yep, for all of next year, regardless of the status of the water, just to provide assurances.
So we're back, it's your water system, you're committed to providing the water, bottled water until this is.
Yep. Resolved.
Till you're up and running and fully compliant. The DEP is fast-tracking this, which is good, because they're giving you the money and overseeing. Sometimes these operations could take months or a year in licensing, so.
Yeah.
So you guys are all ready to go as soon as you get the check in the bank.
Yes.
Essentially, so. Well, that's wonderful, we will, we will, I think we'll have, we have to make some decisions on the next school year coming up anyhow, in the near future, and this is kind of the news we were, I know my, I personally have been waiting for, and Jen knows that I've been waiting for that, and I think Peter knows that I've been waiting for that news, so it couldn't have happened at a better time, so. I just, I, I'm working with Jen, she's been very committed and, and consistent in her, in the, in the Board of Selectmen's pursuit of this solution, so it's been a pleasure to this point.
Thank you.
We had our ups and downs as a committee and a board, but we're coming to a, a resolution, hopefully that, 30 years in the making, so.
I know.
I applaud, applaud you guys for being consistent on this and persistent, so. So we have some new information to look at, and we will be discussing it and, and hopefully moving in the direction north of this building, it is, in the very near future.
Sounds good. So I'll put together, I'll reach out to our water operator and timeline for the pilot program and just confirm it's one to two weeks. That's what we've been told, which I still find shocking. But, so we'll get that, and then when everything will be complete, and like I said, the spender is just waiting to sell the equipment to us.
Well, we have our water filtration system in Blackstone, we have a schedule on that, and, and the, and the testing essentially is that. The DEP is there for that short period of time, so they're, because they're like testing onsite, and, and so this, they're very thorough with it, so that's, I think that's why that period is of aggressive testing is so short.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is to approve the amended school year calendar. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes.
Again.
So we have a few changes to the 24-25 calendar, just as a result of some school cancellation. The new last day of school for this school year for Millville Elementary and the Middle School is June 17th, that is a Tuesday, and will be an early release, and the new last day for BMR is June 18th, which is a Wednesday, and that'll be an early release day as well. So the high school had one additional cancellation day than the elementary and middle school.
Motion to approve the amendment of the 24-25 school calendar.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. And then next, we have the 25-26 school committee car, ah, school committee calendar. And so this, of course, is a superintendent, a tentative calendar, which we, which sets up the Thursdays.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And there's just a couple of small changes to the calendar, to the proposed calendar for the school committee for next year. The first is, we added a second meeting in October, so the meetings will be on the 9th and the 23rd. You may recall, the October meeting this year was incredibly long, because we had MCAS and goals and school improvement plans and all the things with that. So we added a second meeting so we could thin that out a little bit. And then I actually think that was the only real change on that. The rest of it remained similar to this year's calendar, and then, of course, the January budget workshop dates are always determined by the school committee on the 8th of January. So that'll be the 8th of January 2026. Other than that, it remains pretty much the same as this year's calendar.
Okay, any, any questions on that matter? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the school committee calendar for 25-26.
So moved.
Motion made by Jane.
Second.
Second by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next is to vote to recertify the FY '26 budget. Superintendent.
Yes, so in your packets, we have a updated budget certification sheet. It, it's all here, so if we want to do the read-around thing that the committee normally does to recertify, if the committee chooses to do that. But the big change is $150,000 that we were able to identify through, actually, Joe was able to identify through various accounts to try and get the assessments down to the towns. I know it's not exactly what Millville necessarily needed, but we did take another crack at that to try to get the assessments down. That $150,000 we would use to prepay tuitions for next school year for our, at our students at our collaborative. Jill was able to work with the, our collaborative to identify students and put up a prepayment schedule to help with that. And what the recertification would do, and that reduction of $150,000 would bring Blackstone's overall assessment for FY '26 to 3%. Right now, it's at 3.9, so it would bring it down to 3%. And it would bring Millville's overall assessment, which is currently at about 2.6%, to about 1.6%. So it would come at about a percent savings to both, both of our member towns. And so I don't know if the committee wants to go through and, and kind of reread all of the motions and do all of that. Essentially, what we did was we reduced the additional contribution from both towns accordingly based on their percentage. So that's kind of, Joe, I don't know if I missed anything on that?
No, no, that's right on target.
Is there any, any questions from the committee? So, Mr. Superintendent, so essentially, we would, there must be just on two motions for the additional, for one for each town.
Yeah, we could do a motion to adopt the gross operating budget, because that gross operating budget is $150,000 less than the initial gross operating budget, and then, I'm looking down.
I think both the assessments, maybe?
It would be the, the two at the end, right? Is that the best way to do the?
Is it the two at the end or the two in the middle?
They're not going.
Where is it?
They're going to be the additional.
Oh, here it is, yes, my apologies. Underneath the, that, the above reimbursement total, those two pieces underneath, I think it's these two guys.
So one, three, and four?
Yeah. One, three, and four, yeah. Does that make sense? Yeah. The total gross and then the overall assessments.
None of the other lines changed, right? That's right?
I, no, because the other number, motion number five is the revenues, and then the motions at the bottom, motion six and seven are the capital, right? Joe, I don't think I'm missing anything, right?
No, one, three, and four are the only lines that have changes in them.
Right, okay.
And then three and four, the only changes are to the additional amounts for each, for each town.
And the last motion, we don't have to, we don't need to make to close it off, close it up?
Because it's the alternate presentation. Whatever, do that.
No, we're good?
I think we're okay. I mean, if the committee wants to, we always can, it can't, it can't cause any harm.
How about we just?
To one, three, four?
I'm going to read them all. We'll go right around the block, we'll start with you, Matt. If, if, if there's no objection, let's just read them all, and that way they're, we don't, you know this happens, there's some technical thing that shows up, it is going to show up on the day before the Millville Town Meeting or something like that, we'll have to reconvene and, you know, we know how it goes, it happens to all of us.
We're Blackstone.
Yeah, well, it happened before Millville, because they're first. That's the only reason why I said that, yeah.
All right.
So, yeah, sure.
I move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $29,872,530.
Motion made by Matt.
Second.
We're going to go with the first, second, we'll go with, second by Tara Scobie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2025-2026 year. Chapter 70, $12,080,008. Regional transportation, $856,952. School choice tuition, $181,234. And charter school reimbursement at $222,116. The above reimbursements would total $13,340,310. The total operating budget for 2025-2026 is $31,904,716.
A motion made, was it 718?
718.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
$718.
And then to Chuck, a motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Scobie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to move to assess the amount of $11,941,486 to the town of Blackstone to be applied to the operating budget for the 2025-2026 school year, which includes $8,980,523 for the minimum contribution, $1,145,028 in exclusionary costs, and $1,815,935 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Tara Scobie.
Second.
Second by Tara Locken. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous.
I move to assess the amount of $3,813,963 to the town of Millville to be applied to the. the operating budget for the 2025-2026 year, which includes $2,845,313 for the minimum contribution, $374,585 in exclusionary costs, and $594,065 in supplemental investments.
Motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck Dutton. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. I'll make a motion to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year of 25-26. Excess and deficiency, $485,696. Medicaid, $190,000. Revenue from user fees, $82,000. Revenue from gate fees, $15,000. Revenue from classroom rental, $100,000. Revenue from pre-K tuition, $395,233.
Second.
I made the motion, seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion?
You said 485,696. It's actually 458,696. Just reverse the numbers.
Oh, all right. So just to clarify my motion, my motion, the first excess and deficiency was $458,696 as corrected by Mr. Catalano, seconded by Kerry. Any further discussion? Thank you, Matt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion to move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $339,983.53 to be assessed solely to the town of Blackstone, which includes $99,520.23 for the JFK boiler windows project, $149,924.25 for the roof projects, and $90,539.05 for the BMR high feasibility study.
Motion made by Kerry.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $163,983.99 to be assessed solely to the town of Millville, which includes $67,689.29 for the Millville boiler project, $66,675.75 for the roof projects, and $29,618.95 for the BMR high school feasibility study.
Motion made by Jane.
Second.
Seconded by Tara Scobie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I move to certify the alternate presentation of the total budget representing only monies moving into and out of the general fund. This presentation will be used by the Department of Revenue in the calculation of excess and deficiency.
A motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And that's the last one. And just coincidentally, every Millville motion was made by a Millville rep and every Blackstone motion was made by a Blackstone rep on how that went around. It's a good night for Millville. I think you save 60 grand on your water operations and another 40, almost 40,000 on your assessment from the district, so we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I still have some comments, actually, on the budget.
On the new budget? On the newly accepted budget?
Yes.
Come on up. No, come on up. We have it on the agenda.
So I appreciate the changes that were made to the budget. Like, that was really good. But it's still a lot for us. If you look at where we were on the, we tried to pass an override to kind of close our deficit and it failed, and it was spectacular in failure. Like, there was, people don't want to pay more taxes in Millville. So we really have to tighten our belts. And I think one thing that's difficult is that I did see a member of the school committee advocating against the override, which is fine, but then we can't come to this meeting and then raise the budget. I know it went down a little bit, but it really does need to go down more. And for example, and I know we haven't always been collaborative and there's been tension, but for example, on the feasibility study, I voted yes on that and it passed in Millville. And that was because I wanted the data to make a decision to vote, and I think the community should have access to that data. I know some people will say no regardless. And, but I had mentioned that we could use stabilization to cover that cost, and we can't make that recommendation anymore. We're gonna have to pay for that in another way. So I appreciate the efforts, but I just want to make sure that if you, if we're fighting an override, that's okay, but please don't come to this meeting and then raise the budget when you're not allowing for the override. There should be an alignment and activity. So, but in closing, I do want to say I am very appreciative of this. When I saw the post over the weekend from Kerry, I was like, I can't believe this is happening. I really did not expect it, so I don't want to seem unappreciative. But in Millville, we do need a little bit more help.
Well, I'll, I'll respond to you there. So our, our increase over last year for the town of Millville, 1.59%, now it's down to, which is 62,000 on 3.9, around 3.8, 3.8 million. And...
So we can keep that growth rate for the next couple of years?
Well, yes. Yeah, 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 yeah. And I understand, and I understand your, maybe your frustration.
Which wasn't this year.
Well, yeah, so, and by the way, Millville's not the only one with certified free cash in this district, so that's, and that's common. It's not an uncommon thing. Stabilization fund is to, one of the things is for your bond rating and to be secure if you have big issues that may come up. Free cash, I would assume, you would anticipate using to fund the feasibility study.
Well, we're gonna be using it to balance the budget, actually.
Yes. But ideally, you would want to use that to.
Sure.
Fund the offsets.
Yes.
At the feasibility study that Millville voted for. So I do get the, the concern on your, on your end.
Yeah. I will say if the growth rate keeps at this rate and then taxes can catch up, that will, that's also works for us. If we can keep the slow increases going, Mr. Chairman.
You've needed, you've needed the water situation fix for almost 30 years. You've needed an override for 20. How about that? That's the reality of it.
Yeah. Well, no, well, it failed spectacularly, so they don't, there's not a desire for an override in Millville. It wasn't no, it was no. So.
Well, I commend you on those efforts as well.
Yeah, you sound like my husband. Good job, Jen.
Yeah, you, you, well, they cannot, no one can criticize you for not giving enough information. I will say that.
Thank you.
And thank you.
So, thank you. This was honestly, I was surprised and really happy. So I hope I don't appear ungrateful because I really, really am, really, really surprised.
Your voice is always.
Completely unexpected.
Welcome to be heard here. I may not always agree with it, we may not always be, for the most part, we're doing all right.
As we're civilized, that's what matters. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck to your newly, well, almost newly formed Board of Selectmen once they get sworn in. Congratulations on your reelection, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay. Can we just take a motion to adjourn? We have to do this evaluation now? Let's end on a good note, like, we've, Millville got their water, like.
Whoa, 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 whoa! We're gonna end on the best note you've ever even seen.
All right, let's have it.
Actually, you've seen all the work that's in here already, frankly.
We've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, it's the work we're doing.
Who's writing those notes, by the way?
I'm gonna grab the clicker. I'm not getting up and walking out, I'm grabbing the clicker. Well, maybe some of you are just like, yes, he's leaving. We don't have to sit through this.
Where's the auditors to lock the doors behind them?
So this year, I have a special guest who is going to be presenting with me. Jill and I are gonna actually.
Sorry to interrupt. If I would have known that, I'd have known this.
Jill and I are gonna tag team this, and we are doing so because you'll notice that these are not just my goals, these are the district's goals. So this work happens because we've got a great team that are, that are pulling the wagons, as we heard tonight. And that team, frankly, includes our students. And one of the things that I hope the committee was able to see in the last two meetings was that our students are plugged into this work. Joe Fallis mentioned a learning walk that happened today, that we have a team of folks that are heading out of state, going to Arizona for a week to study other high schools. And our students are going with parents and administrators to go in to see what other promising practices are happening across, frankly, across the country that will be bringing back to the high school. And so the students are very much involved. We heard from some tonight about, you know, you know, not being fond of a particular pilot that we're, that we're doing, and that's okay. It's, it's good, right? This is good stuff. We want students to be very much part of this process. So you saw some of that, you heard some of that in the last couple of meetings, and tonight, Jill and I are gonna walk through just some quick highlights on the goals as far as where things are at. Very similar, I know many of you are used to this format, but we did, Jackie sent out yesterday the slide deck with all of the evidence hyperlinked. So really easy to navigate. You can just click on the actual piece of evidence, it'll come up, and next to that evidence, as we've done in the past, it shows you the focus standards that the evidence is being used to, to highlight. And so these are the standards that the school committee approved in October underneath each of the four areas on which I'm evaluating. I won't read through the goals. I know the school committee is very familiar with the goals. It's also very small font, so I actually can't read that unfortunately anymore. But the student learning goal is really broken down into two pieces. There's a curriculum focus and there's an instructional focus. And again, this all anchors directly back to our district strategy or also known as our blueprint. So there is a variety of evidence here, and I'm gonna, Jill and I are gonna talk through certain pieces, and Jill's gonna tee us off. Tim, we met with before the discussion this evening so that he could actually pull up the evidence, so this will flow a little bit smoother. But we are not gonna walk through every single thing that's on here and look at that evidence, but rather just highlight a few key pieces that are helping us move towards meeting the goals that are outlined.
So I think Tim is gonna be pulling up, and again, this is in your packet, we're gonna get to this in a minute. It's a tool that we use as part of the work that we're doing with our Learning Acceleration Network. We refer to it as LAN. This was, we got, it was grant funded, it's through DESI, and it supports our district leadership team in setting and achieving certain areas that we put out there. This year, our team is, we have our middle school principal, Jenny, we have our high school principal, Jill, myself, Jason, and our lead instruct, coach, Mary Colonino, a part of this work. We are working with a consultant from the Learning Acceleration Network, and we've identified our focus going into this is the ELA area. So what we've been able to do, which was really great, if you look at this chart up here, what we did was picking ELA, but we have certain standards that we look at. So before we started this work, we were, as a group, doing a learning walk, and we met with our consultant. And you can see on here what we did, and Tim, if you can scroll up just a little bit more too, just so they can see the whole form, we had to calibrate our understanding of what all of this meant. And which, what does a four mean? What does a one mean? You know, what does it mean that when we're seeing in the classroom, not meeting? And there are different areas that we're looking at, and the work that we're doing here is to help, to support our principals and coaches to build their capacity, so then they can support our teachers in building their, you know, the teacher capacity. So the form that we're using now, and this is to collect patterns and trends as we go through classrooms, we do this as an entire group. So although we have regular meetings with our consultant, Mickey, to talk through what we're seeing, our goals, do we need to add? Do we need to make quarter turns? We're also, as a full team, going into every single ELA classroom at the middle school level and every single ELA classroom as a team at the high school level. And we're using this form to develop that. What we did find on this form, just to, our preliminary results, is our culture of learning when we go into our classroom, it actually comes out really well. We're strong in that area, and also the high quality materials we're using. So where we're focusing more on our team is the questioning and the tasks, the high quality, that rigor, and also the amount of responsibility that our students are taking for the work. So we're focusing on that. The other thing I want to throw in there, we're also doing, which really isn't part of this, but I think it's important, at principals and myself, we're all participating in a program for our English language learners, and this form, we're kind of revising it to also look at those kind of, you know, in the classroom. So this has been really a great process. I know you all know that we worked with Focus School in the past. This is just kind of pushing our work forward. So it's really been a great experience. We're really hoping to be able to continue with them in the future. And it is collecting patterns and trends. And our principals are actually collecting those patterns and trends, and when we meet them, with them on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, they're showing us what they're seeing in those classrooms, and we're able to address those amongst the whole faculty.
And just to build on that, that's one of the helpful things. So when we meet with our principals, they actually pull up their Google Sheet. They drop all this data into a Google Sheet. It's anonymous, so they're not saying which teacher is what, but they just put it into this document to see. I was in 18 classrooms. Here's where we ranked out for culture of learning, here's where we ranked out for students being responsible for their own thinking in the classroom. And one of the things we heard, I mean, I just want to make the connection, that we heard directly from the high school team tonight, is that this is an area that they're working on. And I think during the learning walk today, the students had some conversation with Ms. Fallis about this, like, we need to get the students thinking deeper and thinking more, and we need to get the teachers doing less work. The students need to be doing more work. And the teacher work should be happening during preparation time, right? That's where their sweat comes in. The students' sweat equity, so to speak, should be coming into the classroom, where they're actually carrying the water, instead of the sage on the stage that we all went through, the teacher up at the white, we know this, teacher up at the whiteboard, or a blackboard for us, probably. We don't think we had whiteboards, but, right? Doing all the things, and you're just sitting there taking notes. And at the end of the period, the teacher's exhausted. FYI, that really didn't work well for us either. Just putting that out there. And it's not working for the kids. The students need to be doing that work. So that's what Jill's really talking about, is capturing the data that's helping to drive that forward, and we heard a bit about that.
And this isn't a surprise. Teachers have this. They know what we're coming in, they know what we're looking for, so they understand, you know, when we go out into those classrooms. So any questions on the LAN? Great. And connected to LAN, I just, I'm gonna jump into the next piece of evidence. Tim, I believe it's the, our thinking classroom. I don't think, I don't know if we have a slide yet, but when we're talking about students taking ownership of their learning, Mrs. Ramka, who kind of spearheaded our thinking classrooms, but you'll see in your evidence that there is a video in there that tells you all about what the thinking classroom is all about, and also some video, some clips in there of our staff that actually did this activity, did activities during one of their PD days. And the thinking classroom is for all classes. And it really is, and you're gonna see this again when we get into a later piece of evidence, because remember, all the things that we do, even LAN and thinking classroom, is throughout. And what the thinking classroom is, is it's taking, taking the sage on the stage, it's giving the ownership to the students. And we got to watch it in action too, and I know our leadership team also did it together. And at our principal PLC, which we'll bring up, they got it, there's a problem that's put up on kind of a whiteboard, okay? It's gotta be erasable. And the kids are put into groups, and you'll have one student who has the marker, who can't speak, who's just working through the groups when the other kids are telling them how to work through it, they're having conversations, and no one can hide. Everyone has to be actively engaged. So it's going from what they call in this, being a student, studenting, you know, just kind of sitting and take it all in, to being actively engaged and thinking, you know, as part of that work. So that started, again, it was, it was, started at our middle school. There's work being done with our staff there, and I know our other principals, they're starting to work on that as well at our high school and our elementary schools. And the kids seem to love it. When we did our ILT, they came and talked to us about it, and they said, we really do like it.[1739.11] like it. And kids will tell you, in the past, I could just sit there and not say anything in what we called group work. They actually are thinking and have to take an active role in all of this. So this is, again, another concept that we're moving forward in. It seems to really be, you're taking off. The kids are really enjoying it.
And if you want to learn more, as Jill mentioned, we actually put, I think it's about 45 minutes, but we put a video link in the evidence where the author of the research and the text actually runs through where this all came from, the significant, very significant study that was done to lead to, and it's just so interesting, the actual percent of students that are actually thinking and applying their thoughts in class versus what we might think when we walk into a classroom. Because again, we all sat through that, right? In rows with our notebooks and all the things. And he talks about that, like we actually, it was a very small percentage of us that were actually engaged authentically in the learning. Many of us were just transferring notes. And when you think about the different levels of questioning and the different levels of thinking we want our kids to do and the type of problem solving they need to do, transfer is at the very basic level. It isn't bad, but you can't live there. And so the author of the research does a really nice job of explaining that. And then essentially kind of laying out what the strategies are to use in the classroom to combat that. I went to a training with a seventh, sixth, seventh grade team, and it was great. I did the training with the teachers and partnered, actually with Mr. DeWolf. He and I were, had to do the vertical learning together. And it was a really great experience. The key is making sure you got the right question. And so again, the teacher's challenge is looking at the content that needs to be taught and developing those really challenging questions that lead to real kind of deep discussion and rigorous thinking around that.
And just one of the quotes I pulled up to finish on that, it was, and this isn't a presentation, but it's, "The goal of building thinking classrooms is not to find engaging tasks for students to think about. The goal is to build engaged students that are willing to think about any task." So it kind of summarizes.
It really does, yeah. Thanks, Jill. The next piece of evidence that is just up for review, and again, there's many other pieces in your evidence for this particular goal, but is our vision statement for our literacy work. I think just some of the highlights here that are really important and all the details are outlined in the evidence. We took a different approach to our curriculum review and renewal process for this year. We actually separated it out into a two-year goal. So you'll see literacy again for next year with a very strong emphasis on writing. And we have a team of teachers from across all three buildings, developing writing expectations that are both horizontal across the grades, but are also vertically running through all of our, through all three of our schools. They are using an anchor text called the Writing Group. That is a research-based text that is helping to guide and steer that work that's all outlined here. But for next year, as the writing committee is continuing their work, and by the way, you'll have an update from them and from our assessment committee in May. Both groups are coming forward to give the school committee an update, which is great. They want to share their work because they're really excited about the progress that's being made in our classrooms. But a more kind of immediate change you'll see next year is we are replacing, as you know, through our budget process, we are replacing the middle school literacy program and we're changing it to StudySync. We're doing that because that is the program that is at the core of our ELA work at the high school. So we want to make sure that our six through 12 literacy program is aligned. So we are leaving our elementary program, Wonders in place, so that'll be PK through five. Jill brought that into the preschool as well. And then six through 12 will be the StudySync program. Although when you get into 11th and 12th grade, the courses are really unique, like British Literature and some of those other courses. They're not clearly using StudySync, but the core, core grade levels for literacy at the high school are using that as their core program. So you'll hear a lot more about the literacy work, particularly as it pertains to writing at our May meeting. But there's a lot of great information that actually outlines a timeline, the process, and what's still to come in your evidence for, for this evaluation cycle. And we'll go back to the slide deck and we'll move to the next goal. We haven't found a seamless way to do this yet, but Tim is really becoming an expert at this. Our next goal is focused around student health and wellness.
So I want to start and take you back to the fall on Rachel's Challenge. You'll notice in your evidence is actually a link to the website. But remember, Rachel's Challenge, just as a quick summary, is it was a program, presentation that was presented, it was after Columbine, in memory of this, one of the students, Rachel Scott, who lost her life that day. And it was a program that was presented across all of our buildings in the fall. And of course, it was, you know, presented at grade-appropriate levels. We had, you know, our high school who heard more about the story and our littles heard more about, you know, the kindness aspect of it. So it really focuses on that kindness, compassion, and positive school culture. And it's not just a one-time thing. There was a presentation and I asked, you know, to get some additional feedback to share with you that our buildings, how they're moving forward with this. If you, at Millville Elementary School, if you ever walked into the building, you might see a chain, you know, with construction paper chains. And actually, the students earn those chains for showing different acts of kindness. And it's hung around the school. And Christina mentioned to me that their goal is to get all the way back around the school. And she does anticipate they're going to be there. So we're recognizing kids. It's not just talking about it, but when we're seeing that, they're doing that. We're also, they do review the concepts as part of their guidance program because Rachel's Challenge also gave us resources to help do that. At the middle school, I know that the middle school, they're in different classes, they're working with Rachel's Challenge, whether it's their enrichment and guidance. They've made some kindness quote posters. They've done some activities for kindness and, you know, nobody eats alone in the cafeteria. They're doing kindness quotes that they're actually presenting, you know, in the morning announcements. They've done some empathy stations when it came to the guidance classes. And they're also using our program. This year, we have able to purchase this through a grant, our Navigant 360, which has a social, a social emotion component. And we also have that threat assessment on that. But they're using those lessons that connect to Rachel's Challenge for empathy, compassion, kindness, and action. And then we also had the, what their SEL team is doing, they're actually putting a challenge together, again, to create their chain across the school. And at our high school, they all signed, all the schools had a banner that they signed that, you know, to make the challenge for change and to be, be changed. During the advisory, the students are also doing lessons related to, you know, accountability, appreciation, kindness. They did a Rachel's Challenge lesson about paying it forward, which focused on empathy. And during the month of May, there are going to be a lot of lessons of acceptance for all. So it definitely was a program we brought. It was, it was very emotional for some. I will say, I went to all of them and our littles were so loud in it, it was great. They got them going, they got them yelling, they got them really excited. But it was just to take away that message about kindness and compassion, you know, forever for all.
The students here, the elementary students, approached us and asked for buddy benches. So if you're not familiar with that, that's where, if you have a student at recess who's looking for a friend, they can sit on the buddy bench and, you know, a classmate will come by and sit with them or maybe pick them up and say, hey, come, you know, come, you know, play football or shoot hoops with me and that kind of thing. So we did, we did put buddy benches here to help them with their goal of increasing kindness. So we're really proud of the kids for advocating for that. Some other things, some other pieces of evidence here before we jump into the men's and women's leadership piece. Student focus groups, this is something that's been really important. We have just a snapshot summary of one of our focus groups here. But Jessica Sinclair, HR specialist, and I have been having various meetings throughout the year in all of our schools with just students and with our staff. And so we'll talk about the staff one in a few minutes. But the student focus groups have been really, really helpful in terms of sharing with us kind of what's working and what's not, what they're looking for. And they're holding us accountable. We were talking with our Millville students about some of the clubs and activities we have. And actually Elijah, who was here for the MOI presentation, he was very quick to remind me, we mentioned this to you the last time you were here. And so we did put some of the clubs in, but they weren't all the things that, that the kids wanted. So they sent us back with a task list of getting in the other second half of the clubs. So we, working with the PTO, the PTO put in place quite a few different clubs, Legos and some other things for the students to be able to do. But I am anticipating, I will hear from Elijah and friends when we go back, that it still isn't enough. So that's okay. We are working on that. We actually have a survey out right now. Do you want to talk about that, Jill?
Sure. We have, we did have some interested members of the community who were interested in expanding our programs after school for Millville. So we did get together a survey for not only our parents, to ask them, what would you be interested in? What are the interest areas? What are the hours? If there was a fee, you know, would you be interested in a program? Just to kind of get a sense of what people were looking for. And we also sent a survey to our staff because we want to know staff interests of, do you have any interest in presenting any clubs? What is your availability? What is your interest to do this? So we're hoping to get all that feedback. It went out, I think about a week ago.
Yes, yep.
So get that all back, just to see, you know, are there some additional things that we can do for our Millville Elementary School students?
And if we have any Millville families that are tuning in, I believe as of Sunday, we had 40 folks who had taken the survey from Millville Elementary. So just keep beating the drum out there. We want to get parents insight on what are the things they'd be looking for if we were able to expand after-school opportunities. And so we're definitely hard to work on that. And then not hyperlinked here, but in front of you this evening is the after-action review from our tabletop with the Mass Emergency Management Administration? Is that MIMA? Something like that? Yep. And so that is for the committee's review. We did not want to link that because this will be posted on our website. And of course, you know, issues of safety, we always keep. So one of the things that I can share as a highlight, our work with the local police departments from both communities, local fire departments. And you'll see the results bore out so strongly that MIMA actually handed us off to Homeland Security. They said, there's really nothing else we can do to help your district. You've done all the things. So we just had a meeting with Homeland Security, believe it or not, who, their Homeland Security Office in our area came out and we asked them to essentially test us, come to our schools and tell us what we can do better and different. So they were out, Joe, was it Tuesday this week?
Yes.
Joe was with them all morning, I think, on Tuesday touring the facility. So more to come on that, which I know we-
And by test us, it wasn't give us a test, it was look at our facilities, look at what we have, not to do a-
That's right.
It was not a tabletop drill.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying this.
Yes.
So we'll get some feedback from them, which we'll share with the committee in executive session. As the committee knows, and I hope our community knows, we spend a significant amount of time on school safety. We don't talk about it publicly because we're not supposed to. All this information is, you know, is open to public consumption and we keep our safety plans confidential to protect the safety of our students and staff. And we will continue to do so. But I would ask any of our families who are listening, if you have questions or things you're wondering about, I will meet with anybody at any time to talk about this work. I know Jill will, I know Joe will as well. Our school resource officers are also deeply, deeply involved in this work. So, but wanted to make sure that the committee had the draft feedback from MIMA. But the other just piece of evidence I want to highlight here, and Tim will pull up, it's just a real quick snapshot of the men's and women's leadership group. One of the things that I heard from the school committee in my end-of-year evaluation was, you know, the work we're doing with our men's leadership is excellent, but we need to expand this to our young ladies. So we did. And I will say, the addition of our athletic director has been wonderful because she has been actually spearheading this work with myself and Mr. Ducharme. And so just a few photos here. Our students are not only doing service learning locally at our food pantry, but also, again, in Worcester at the Purnay Community Center. But we also have expanded that to career and college readiness, taking them on a tour of Worcester State was awesome. I can't underscore the importance of showing our kids what's possible and helping them develop a vision for themselves. It may not sound like a college tour is, you know, all that significant. It really is. And getting our high school kids on a college campus and letting them see that they belong there, if that's something they choose to do, is really powerful. Running parallel to that, equally as powerful, we are bringing them to the BV Blackstone Valley Ed Hub to give them a crash course in all things careers, from welding to manufacturing and looking at what the different career opportunities within the Blackstone Valley are. So our boys went already and our young ladies are going next week. I'm sure they will be in the welding equipment and doing the virtual welding, which is really awesome to see. But we're excited about the work continuing and excited about the Young Women's Leadership Group that we started through this work. With that, you also heard Maya mention earlier, this week we teed off our, an expansion of our Charger Time with members of our local police, fire. Scott is running our small engine repairs, which we'll hear about later. And then the vice president of marketing from Dean Bank was also present this week for financial literacy for just our seniors. So all the seniors took the financial literacy class. I think tomorrow's the last session of that. And so we are looking to expand that even further. So if we have other partners that are listening, we will be reaching out to Southwick Zoo. We are going to be tapping on our own early childhood educators and asking them to run an early childhood course through Charger Time for our students, as well as continuing to work with, with police and fire. I will tell you, one of the coolest things was going in and seeing one of our alumni from last year in our, who now works for our fire department, teaching our current students how to actually put on the fire equipment. Really awesome. You talk about it kind of coming full circle. These are our alumni now coming back that are not only serving our community and keeping our community safe, but are now teaching our students how to do just that. Mrs. Falus said, the feedback she's getting from the kids has been amazing, that are taking the police, fire, and the small engines, a small engine repair group. I did, I might have learned how to change the oil on a snow blower from Scott on Monday. Not sure I can do it yet, Scott, but-
He might have learned.
It was pretty cool. Yeah, it was pretty cool to see. Moving on to the next goal, we'll wait for Tim to kick us along here. Next, we are going to be talking a little bit about our staff support. Here we go. Thanks, Tim. Oops. So our staff development and support goal. We have a significant amount of evidence in here. There is, we are doing so much work in this space to try to help grow and support our educators at every level. And Jill is gonna review a few pieces.
Sure, just a few I just want to bring up there. The first one is what we started this year is some lesson studies. It's more of a, a different approach to professional development. Tim, I think we have a little chart for this. And it's really focusing on teaching practices and student, student progress. We have teachers who would teach in the same grade or in the same content area who meet with the team. And by the team, I say it's the teachers, our coaches, whoever's coaching in that building, and our lead coach. And they actually identify a lesson that they're going to teach. They do this together, okay? And they, they plan for it. One of the teachers then takes that plan and they teach while the rest of the team is observing. After that's done, the team gets together and they talk about what worked, what didn't work, how can we tweak this, other different interventions. They debrief and they revise. Then, and it has to, this is done quickly and right in a row because then the teacher who didn't teach the first time then takes all that feedback and then teaches that lesson to her kiddos. Then they come back together and say, oh, look, this worked, this didn't work. It really is helping refine their practice. And why this is great is, this isn't just for our new teachers. We have very seasoned teachers who have done this work together. And you, you get something out of it because you're, you're having a conversation first, implementing it, then you're having an opportunity to go back and revise and the next teacher is able to go in, you know, and change some things up. So we're doing this at, I think the high school's coming up, they have some lessons that are being there. We've done this a lot in Millville and also at the middle school. So we've done it per grades and we've also done it, you know, to science teachers or, you know, to history teachers. So we're doing that as well. And again, it's, we're looking at it as professional development, but it's a different approach to it. It's a collaborative approach. And it's going really well, the feedback from our staff. I know people in the beginning were very hesitant and a little bit nervous, especially some of our seasoned teachers. But after they went through it, they did find it was really productive.
Jill, do they all get an experience with that?
Not all of the teachers have, but there has been, you know, teachers, it could be some of our newer teachers that are doing that and some of our seasoned teachers. It would be great for everyone eventually to do that, absolutely. But our coaches are also involved in that. But it really, it really has worked out well.
It's open to everybody, though.
It is absolutely open to everyone. We encourage, you know, people who we really think could benefit from that. And some of our amazing teachers are, you know, are doing this with other teachers as well. as well, and they're getting that feedback. I never thought of that. You know, because think about it, you're in your classroom and we have a coach go in there, but having your colleague with you too, you'll really be able to give that feedback to support each other as you go through this. Yeah, so it's working out well.
And some are strongly encouraged.
Yes, yes. So the lesson study, I just wanted to touch base on. There's also some evidence that you'll see in there. There's not a specific slide, but you'll go in. We have our program that for our two and three-year old, not three-year-old, two and three-year teachers, that they engage in a mentoring program with other districts. We actually connected Bellingham, it's Bellingham, Uxbridge and us. And they do meet, it's, you know, they have three formal PD sessions all together and each town hosts one of those. But what it does is it gives those teachers the opportunity, because it's a little bit different than our first-year mentors, which is you have an individual mentor, you do have coaching, you have all that support. It's bringing those staff members together as a whole, and they may do, they do professional development, they do learning walks as a group within each building. So they're seeing the other districts, they're being able to talk about that, they're able to get some feedback. And they also work on things like, which is in your packet, a problem of practice. It could be that one of the teachers in another district or in our district may be presenting something, "This is what I'm seeing, there's a template of how you do that." But they're able to talk through it, you know, as colleagues. What do you do? What would you see? What are better ways to approach this? So it's been really nice to do it. We do a lot of work within our district with our teachers together, but having other districts come in with us, and in this case, it's Uxbridge and Bellingham, it, you know, it kind of broadens what you see. We're able to go to their schools, you know, and walk around and see what's going on there and have those conversations, and they also come to us. So it's really nice to have that. So we've been doing that. And then finally, which I, we enjoy doing this as well, this is our second year. I think our mentor, the second and third-year teacher mentors are in our third year. We also have, I think you know within our district, we have PLCs, our professional learning communities amongst our teachers in the grade levels with the courses, but, and we also have three principals in our district. And sometimes, you know, you think about it, they're a single principal in a building. So for the last couple of years, we have joined forces with Bellingham and Hopedale, and we have regular meetings with them and myself, Jason, their superintendents and directors also attend. But it's an opportunity for those same types of things. We do, you know, professional development, principals bring what kind of topics. Our principals actually also present information at these PLCs. And one of the ones that I mentioned before are thinking classrooms. Jenny actually as a principal presented that to the entire group. And there's, her whole slideshow was in there. And we actually, she actually had all the principals get up and engage in an activity. I think it was about, was it about cats or, I don't remember what it was.
Yes, cats and rats.
Cats and rats.
Yes, so many cats, yeah, catch some rats. But they were up there trying to, you know, have conversations and figure it out and follow the rules. So that's really been great. And it does, it's good connections with other schools and other principals who are there when we do that. And we do, we meet on a regular basis and it's great.
And to this piece, the, our three districts were asked to present this summer at the state superintendent conference, this model. Because there are many small school systems like ours. And our collaborative approach to how we're trying to get and develop and build leadership in this kind of PLC, professional learning community format, is being recognized. So we were selected and asked to present at the superintendent conference this summer. So we'll be sharing this really good work with our colleagues from across the state. And then just a couple of other quick pieces on this. As I mentioned, the student focus groups, we also have our staff focus groups. So you'll see a piece of evidence, it's just a summary point. We've had two meetings with our staff and we ask the principals to identify our friends and colleagues who are not shy. And so they have done a great job of getting our educators in the room with myself and Jessica from HR to give us the straight and direct feedback. And they are, they are very happy to do so. And so I really do appreciate those conversations in each building because, you know, these are educators, they're working very hard and they will tell us what they need more of, less of, and, you know, how we can work best to support them. So you'll see just a summary from one of our visits in there for that. And then the last piece I just want to highlight quickly, I linked in here for the committee, is our staff spotlight. One of the things that, and it can be sort of easy to miss because it's at the bottom of our webpage, but every month, we actually have a new staff that we're highlighting from each one of our schools and really kind of bragging and showing off. Very well deserved. But you can see the, we just linked the spotlight forum so you can see what that looks like. And then we linked the April staff spotlight. And if, Tim, if you wouldn't mind clicking that, it should bring us to our three April spotlight folks, one from each building. Let's see if it comes up. Hopefully it's here. Yes.
Jason, with you saying that, the spotlight, I did notice it as the bottom of the website and you don't notice it. So maybe we can tweak that website.
Can we post it to the district Facebook page?
Oh, yeah, that's-
We might be able to, yeah. I have to see how it would interface with that, but yeah. And this is great. And we have so many faculty that frankly could, these four folks that were picked this month, now they're getting picked on, but it could be up here.
You're getting recognized.
Yes, they are getting recognized.
You were getting picked on, I wanted to skip this.
There you go. But we're proud of all of our staff. But, you know, this month, we're highlighting and focusing on these three individuals. And so each month, we select three that come from the schools. And there's always a nice little kind of summary and a nice photo of them. So we'll see if we can move that around somehow and get it, kind of get it rearranged. But we're very proud of our staff and-
And it's all staff, not just teachers.
It's all staff, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've had folks from Matt Walker that were, you know, highlighted, to some admin assistants, to classroom teachers, to IAs. It's awesome. So it really gives us a chance to celebrate our staff. We talk a lot about the, like, you know, the professional development and the support and the mentoring, and all those things are good things, but like, this is great. You know, we also have a variety of staff breakfasts. We actually have one coming up, National Administrative Assistant Week is next week. Nope, the April Vacation Week, sorry. But next Thursday, we're doing coffee and dessert at the end of the day with all of our admin assistants at Central Office. So we don't talk about those things a lot, but we do those, we do those types of activities to celebrate our staff as well.
And I think the staff enjoys when we cook them breakfasts.
Yes, Jill and I also do breakfast for them. I will say Jill's a little bossy in the kitchen, but that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I will try to make the, you know, pancakes and she comes over and she says, "Too much batter there, put more chocolate chips in that." Yeah, so that's a lovely experience.
I own it, absolutely.
So we do. A couple of times a year, we make breakfast for our staff, various groups of our staff to thank them for what they're doing.
Scott, I think you love the French toast, correct, that I make? Absolutely.
I was looking at Scott over there thinking, "He's waiting again, does he get something?"
So we're grateful for our staff and definitely take the opportunity to celebrate them when we, when we can. But lots of information there for you to review in terms of how we're working on that particular goal that will also, we hope, help with retention. So we did go back and look, our five-year, six-year staff retention is right around 80%. So, you know, certainly want to continue to push that higher. But that includes retirements as well, just as an FYI. And the last two goals are actually really easy. We can kind of breeze right through those. The next one, once this comes back up, these are all super familiar, is our district strategic plan, and Jill's just going to-
Sure, it's up there. So you know we're finishing up with our blueprint 2.0 and we're going to be moving on, I guess we'll call it our blueprint 3.0. But it's, you know, I think, Tim, I think we do have that. We've started with, again, we know the charger way, our promise is still there. But what we've tried to do is look at our goals and we are going to keep the same focus areas. We're looking at curriculum, instruction, the whole child and the community. But we're looking to really refocus those goals based on the work we've done now and the data that we have back. What I do want to mention, which is most important about this, is we actually are going to be having a community forum. It's going to be Tuesday, May 6th. It's here in this media center here at the middle school. It starts at six, from 6:00 to 7:00. Because we want community input, we want to hear from our parents, our community, our community partners, town governance. We just want to have a discussion, be able to gather that input and feedback, just to see where, you know, everyone's ideas are, where we're going.
Now I have a question.
Sure.
How are you, besides presenting it right here, how are you putting that out to the community?
Can you just clarify your question? What do you mean by putting out to the community? Like, how is that conversation going to go?
We know that it's happening.
Oh, email, Facebook?
Yeah. But you remember-
That's okay.
We bring up the blueprint all the time and this is something we always go back to. We call it our, you know, our North Star, and everything that we do is anchored back to this blueprint. So we want to make sure we get it right.
Again, so if you're tuning in, please join us on May 6th.
Five, six, at six.
There you go.
Yes.
And then the last goal is on our feasibility study. And so I know the committee's very well-versed in where we are in that, but as far as evidence is concerned, there are two different pieces that are linked here. One of them is the actual timeline itself. So when you have a moment, take a look at the feasibility study timeline. And then the other that is linked here, and I know you had copies at our last meeting, is the education visioning work. Just as a FYI, I did ask the architect for, I said, "Put this 65 pages and five slides." And then those five slides, we're going to take that on the road. On the road, what does it mean? It means board of selectmen, it means finance committees, it means public forums, it is everyone and anyone we can get in front of, senior centers. And we'll be having that conversation with the school building committee. Because as we know, this really is a community piece. So everyone's got to own their little part of it and get in front of different groups. But this is really important because this kind of thing can very easily get shelved and no one ever talks about it. Who's going to look at 65 pages of just narrative? So DRA did very quickly boil that down to five slides and sent it to me this week. So we will be taking that show out on the road to get feedback from our communities and to give them a sense of what our education visioning individuals had to say about where they think the high school should go next. So that is it as far as our mid-cycle evaluation. Happy to answer any questions, not just now, but of course, as you're going through the evidence between now and our next meeting in May, that you might have, or if you want to meet and go through it together, happy to do that as well.
Any questions on the superintendent? I'm just going to go back to the MIMA study, the results of the tabletop exercise. And earlier in the meeting, we had to, we did the school budget, a school calendar because of a situation that took place and that's why the high school is getting out of date a day after. And people do not understand how extensive our security and efforts are in our cooperation with the towns. That's intentional because we want to keep it secure. But in that situation, there was a post on social media the next day suggesting that the complex had, you know, no security after dropping, a parent dropped their children off. So that's the worst thing to say on social media, suggesting there isn't any security there. But the idea of the police officers and the, and the security that we had there is sometimes not always to be obvious. But there was plenty of coverage in that building that day. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, especially in the last couple of weeks of, you know, information that goes around the internet and social media as far as, I mean, the school, I suppose we can always do better in our communications, but I don't know another institution in the two towns that provides as much information and attempts to provide as much information through these platforms, whether it's the website, social media. And it's even recognized by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency that the school has extensive system and protocol in place to get messaging out to parents and families regarding any incident and any information. These protocols allow for multiple persons to disseminate messaging quickly. We use these platforms.
We do.
And this, by the way, platform is one of them, but, and this is probably the least monitored form, you know, from people at home, but it's, the information's out there if you're really seeking it, seeking accurate information. So I just wanted to add those two points. And thank you for the presentation. Any other questions regarding the, does anybody regret not adjourning before we start? All right, we'll move on to the business office. Joe, the floor is yours.
Thank you for not adjourning, you'd be missing all of this.
Well, we're sticking around for Scott.
That's right.
He did say we were going to end up high.
That's for Alaska.
For budget journal entries, you'll notice in your packet that there's only three this time around. The first one is mainly just an adjustment to break out the medical and dental expense for an RBT from the salary line. It was co-mingled, so it stayed in the same fund. The second one is to set up a new grant, the Innovative Schools Learning Excursion Grant that was just awarded, it was just initial setup for that grant. And we need to, on the third one, allocate some funds to do some calibration on our audio meter with the, under the nurse repair. So it was just a small adjustment there to cover that expense. And that was all for the past month or so, unless you have any questions. Any questions for Joe on the budget journal entries? I'll take a motion to accept the budget journal entries presented by Joe.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
Bye.
Seconded by Tara Squid. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous. So the next item is the personnel report. You have that in front of you to be placed on file, just indicates the two new hires and a couple of retirements and resignations. And then the expenditure report is the next item. I keep, I keep finalizing my projections, they're getting a little bit more accurate as we go through the end of the year. One thing I want to mention about this report, it does not take into account the $150,000 additional prepayment. So when you look at the projected ending for the year, roughly you subtract $150,000 from that number. I don't, there's nothing surprising here. We do, I will continue to do my recalibrations to cover some individual line shortfalls with the surpluses and other lines, but you'll start to see those budget requests coming forward as we move in. We've started preparing for FY '27 by doing the purchasing to build up our supplies that we can utilize in the next fiscal year. You'll start to see that start happening here, too. And we look like we're in great, a great position. I expect the number at the end to climb as opposed to reduce, less the 150, obviously, as we draw to the conclusion of the year. Does anybody have any questions on that report? And that concludes that for myself.
Joe, while we have you, you did give us an update on the national grid.
Yes, I did put in front of you when you came in on the football field lighting.
Yep.
I got in touch with the company that's looking into doing the proposal for us, and one of the things they were trying to do is they were incorporating EV chargers into that proposal because they felt they could take some of the incentives and granting opportunities that come along with those and build it into the football field lighting to create some savings, mainly around a power supply that would be brought in for the field. Those are gone. It's dried up, no longer available. So they've gone back to the drawing board to prepare a proposal without that included in it. So unfortunately, I don't have any really good news right now, but it is being worked on, hasn't been forgotten. I did include in that piece of paper, I asked them just to give us some kind of an outline of what they're thinking of when they talk about the lights. And you'll see in the picture, they're showing the power supply coming in on the red line and the four lighted posts where they're estimating those would be placed. They're basing their proposal on. That's really all I have for that at this point in time. But we're working on it.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the facilities report.
What are you doing?
I don't know why you're excited about this because it always costs money.
No, I was thinking about that when Jason said we'll end up high. I'm like, no, we really won't. Every time I come here, it's air shoes. I would love to come one day and just say, "I have nothing."
It's great.
It'll be when we get a new building, hopefully. All right, so the high school, there were several damaged floor tiles in the cafeteria. What's happening is due to the extreme cold weather we had, that's a cement slab that's on the ground. So when it got really cold, that contracted and the expansion joint- So when it got really cold, that contracted and the expansion joint gets in there, spread open, cracked all the tiles. I did confirm with UEC, our asbestos consultant, that those tiles are not asbestos. They have been replaced once already. So we have to go ahead to go ahead and change those out. So hoping to get that done over April vacation. The baseball and softball fields that we're responsible for maintaining are in good playing condition. But that being said, if you get heavy rains and the field gets soaked, there's no place for the water to go. And it is our responsibility to make sure that these athletes are safe. Last thing we want is somebody blowing out a knee or Achilles heel or anything. So unfortunately, sometimes we do have to call the games. Track and field, the shot put nets were put up and the discus nets. I know those have been up for a while, but we haven't had a meeting since. All the lines have been painted for the competitions. I did ask that the high jumps get blown off and weeded out. And that has been done to the best of my knowledge. We did move several bleachers off of the football track. We put one bleacher by the softball field, one by the baseball field, and one by the tennis courts. Beginning of March, we had a drain valve in the boiler room that somehow backed out. Don't know how that happened, but it was leaking pretty severely. I was away on vacation, but when I got the phone call and the video, I made the determination with Joe that we needed to get a company in here ASAP that could fix it. And in the past, we have used A Customs Plumbing and Heating, and they were able to come right out and address the issue. Other companies that I spoke to wanted to shut down our heating system, drain the whole system to replace that valve. And it is the only way you can do it because the valves on the heating system are so rusty that you can't turn them without possibly breaking something. And in this case, you couldn't even turn them at all. So they were able to just back it out enough, put some thread tape on it, screw it back in, and it stopped the leak. However, I did get an update from Industrial Burner today that they will be coming out to change the circulator pump. That has, I know, you don't want to hear that name.
They made it.
They are coming out to change the circulator pump April 24th. So at that time, they have to drain the system down and replace two shut-off valves. And I'll have them replace that one at the same time. So that's that. Also, one of the compressor heads, we have a big compressor down there that has two heads. And that compressor maintains the pneumatic systems for the heating systems in the classrooms and all that. It's always run on one head. It alternates between the two compressors. So that will be repaired by A&amp;M compressor. Middle school, we got an alarm that triggered, say, low water temperature. Inside the generator, there's a heater block which is required for diesel engines. It keeps the water warm, so extreme cold temperatures, diesel starts up and runs. Seeing how we don't have extreme cold temperatures right now, it's not an issue. Generator is functioning as it should. This is something that will get ordered and I'll replace that myself. It's only like a half hour job. It's very simple. I replaced it once already. Also, we had a third floor restroom sinks in the faculty bathroom. These sinks are back to back, go down one drain. Clogged pretty good. Head custodian actually took the sink off, tried sneaking it. And after several attempts, we were able to get that cleaned out. So that was done in-house, which saved us some money. Same thing, JFK, AF Maloney had a bad compressor motor. That was just the electric motor. That has been repaired. That's up and running. Ran the week of February vacation, the 28th, 24th through the 28th, complex experience, two power outages. When that happened, the boilers stayed running, but for whatever reason, they were drawing a lot of electricity. And these are fairly new boilers. That shouldn't be happening. So I did confirm with FM generator, they're going to come out. I believe this is the 24th as well, and do what they call a load test. They'll start the generator up, shut the building down, and just run on emergency power. And that'll tell us what it runs for one thing and if there is adequate power or if there's an issue. That'll be done April vacation as well. Nova Elementary School, last Saturday, received a phone call around 10:00 AM that there was an alarm coming from their generator. And that turned out to be a low water level alarm. I was able to silence it and just take care of it the following day. And BMR charger time, small engine repairs. I was lucky enough to be, get nominated to teach this class.
Scott, that is a lovely way of saying that.
But I will tell you, I enjoy it. I think I missed my calling. I should have.
I see what you're doing.
I shouldn't have went into teaching, but I should have stuck with automotive. No, just kidding. No, it's been a blast. I mean, small class, which is good. It gives us enough time to really work, you know, one-on-one, hands-on-hand, and each one had a machine to do. What we did was we gathered up all 10 snow blowers from the district, brought them to the high school. And I taught them how to drain the oil, refill it to the correct capacity, check, double check, make sure the oil level's right because you don't want to blow an engine up. Greased all the fittings, located, showed them how to locate all the fittings, how to grease them. Checked the internal belts for wear. And TIA, we haven't gotten to that yet, but I'm hoping to do that tomorrow. It's just a matter of tipping this snow blower upside down, taking the covers off, showing them where the belts are. It's a blast. And then add the fuel stabilizer to the gasoline to make sure the gas is good, the carburetor stays fresh, and it's ready to run next winter when we need them. Not that we're going to need them, but if we need them. Then I would have also liked, I'm going to pull a spark plug out and show them how to read a spark plug. Because if you take a spark plug and look at it, it can tell you so much just by the color, the carbon that's built up on it. If it's running rich, running weak, lean. So stuff I'd like to teach them. Unfortunately, this stuff isn't taught anymore.
I love it. I love that Joe is doing it.
Yeah, so I wanted to mention that too. In addition to myself, I pulled in Joe Mulally.
He just has such like a great relationship with so many of the students in that building.
He does. He really does. I, he knows every student. It's unbelievable.
What viscosity motor oil are you using on? Snow blower oil changes.
30 weight HD.
5W 30 in the winter.
Dan, do we need to put you with Scott? Charger time?
There isn't much difference between 5W 30 and 30.
30 weighs in the summer, weighs heavier.
Okay, moving on.
I'll be at next class.
Before we let you go, back to the track.
Yep.
The boards on the runways for the jumps, they need to be replaced.
Okay.
You pull one out and just maybe measure it and you can put it back in. Not difficult.
No.
I'm sure you've got the.
I'm sure. Just got to get the right thickness.
Yep.
It's just plywood.
Plywood and like a pine frame or something, yeah. Thank you.
Fully noted.
I was just giving you a hard time on the motor rails. I'm familiar with it, where all those snow blowers came from.
Yes, you are.
Is there ever a time you don't give me a hard time, Dan?
At ours.
But no, I really enjoyed the class. It flew by, I can't believe. In just a half an hour, just two and a half hours, 10 snow blowers, that's.
Oh, we can get you more to change oil. I said, we can get you more if you want to do oil changes.
I need a weed whacker fixed.
Small, yeah, small repair.
Small engine repair, here we go.
We can have a class on just stringing a weed whacker. I think we all can use that.
I've done mine a hundred times. Teaching them to start it.
I can never get the thing to come out of the other thing. If that makes any sense. You know, you put the screwdriver in, you try to pop the thing out.
Coming from you, it comes with perfect success.
Was that the technical, the technical term?
The thing into the other thing with the screwdriver.
With the screwdriver.
With a flathead screwdriver. Yeah, something like that. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been awesome. Thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome.
New addition for the kids, for sure.
Facilities use requests. Few of them, one recently added, right from the box in our.
Yes, that was, should have been in front of you and at your seat this evening. There were three.
Easter egg hunt, a dance performance, and at the school.
The dance step of Greater Exbridge. The PTO, and then the toxin rec as a backup in case there's a rain issue for the Easter egg hunt, the egg hunt.
I think a motion to approve all three requests that's presented.
Motion made by Tara Locken.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Surplus items, IT department.
Yes, there's a list of items, Chromebook shells, keyboards, four monitors, 20 mice, three computer shells, and three broken printers. The IT department's looking to get rid of them.
I said, we have mice?
Oh, that we're getting rid of, you said?
Yeah.
Did those mice escape from some of the snow blowers?
From the cat and rat.
I knew that wasn't getting away without someone.
Scott, did you release mice from the snow blowers? You haven't checked the belts yet. That's where you're going to find them.
I think a motion to accept. Yes, thank you, Tara. Check in.
Motion made by someone and seconded by somebody. All right, Tara, S or L or both?
L.
Tara L made the motion, seconded by Carrie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. So Mr. Superintendent, we going into executive session?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to do a school committee forum, and then we are going to be going into executive session. I did not intend that in front of the camera to adjourn, so. School committee forum, anyone?
Yes.
Tara?
I would like to address the students who came tonight, their concerns about the cell phone policy. I did see that there was a policy subcommittee tomorrow. It looks like that's on the agenda. I don't remember it coming to us at all, to this group, right? We didn't hear anything about that.
No, it's not a policy, it's a pilot.
It's now, it's a pilot, right. So it's a pilot. Do we know, like, where did it come from? Like, was it just like a policy, someone thought of it? Or did staff or administration ask for it?
Yeah. Do you want to touch on that matter?
Yeah, so this was pretty much born out of the recent events that we've had. Stepping from cell phone usage. And we're just trying to look for a way to maybe curb that, you know, inhering from the educators and the admin in the buildings. They're all, seems to be at their wits' end with the cell phone usage. There's a lot of, from their point of view, is there's a lot of different tactics taken by the teachers. Some teachers have it under control, some teachers don't. We're looking at this from a perspective of trying to support the teachers in any way. So we are just really looking at this. We sat with the principals of the buildings and, you know, it was thought of to use this locker as a pilot. So it really just kind of was born out of that.
Did I miss recent events? I don't know what they.
Locked the, the threat made to the school was.
Okay, you said it was there?
Correct, yeah.
The other.
There's no way, sorry, I mean, no way ever to stop all of it, you know, but we.
But I would like to correct a couple of things that they said. I know that they said that in college, there, nobody removes their phone, and that is not correct. I sat in on a class at an Ivy League institution, and all of the students put their phones into lockers when they walked into the, to the classroom. There are multiple discussions on multiple higher education sites about that. There's a new, not, not new, but relatively new novel about an anxious generation and, and the phone use and the, you have read that.
I have, yeah, right.
And, and I would challenge those four students and actually any other students to, to read that because it just really is significant. The other point that they made was that, you know, in the workplace, people have their phones, and that's not a correct statement either. There are lots of workplaces that have priority where you, you put your phone in your locker before you enter or you are automatically dismissed, you know, because of the, you know, nature of what their business is or whatever.
Kind of what they were saying about that is like, you, as an adult or responsible person, maybe, you know, they're not adults yet. Like, you know the repercussion. You use it, you're in trouble. You don't, that's what I took away from that.
Yeah, but, but I guess I'm just saying, if you're going to make a point, make a point with correct data and information. Because I think the world is changing the way it looks at cell phones. Higher education is, workplaces are, even families are. And I don't know what the policy or the pilot is. And I think it's important that as a school committee, if it becomes a policy, we have input into that. We always have had in the past. But I also think the students, it's a great learning opportunity to really see what the studies are out there and, and not just their own reflection of, I want my phone.
I don't think the students necessarily were saying that they want their phone. It's more that it's, that there was no repercussions done. We didn't do the, if your phone is out, it's being taken. If your phone is out twice, you know, now it's being stored in the office. It went from your own personal responsibility to it is entirely being locked up. And following on the heels of the disaster experiment with the yonder pouches. I mean, I don't even know how long that lasted at the middle school. To now be, and that was done through grant money. Now we're looking at something that will be done, I'm assuming, with our budget money.
So much like the yonder pouches, we talked about that. I mean, that was the first thing that I brought up too. Because again, I'm not sold on any of this. It's, that's the process. The process is you try things. If they don't work, they don't work. And you take an honest approach to it. I appreciate this.
The process got mixed up when the word policy got thrown out.
So I appreciate the students coming tonight, and I agree with a lot of the things that they said because this isn't a, this isn't a, you know, policy says and it, the policy committee says and it's done. We know that it's going to come to the larger committee anyway. And we're just trying to figure something out. We're hearing the feedback from the educators, from the admin. We're trying to just, you know, we haven't, and this was really just myself and, you know, Jason having a meeting. We haven't, this hasn't even been sussed out with the policy subcommittee either. So this is not a policy. It's not even.
To that point though, Matt, it was introduced to the students as a policy. It was emailed to the families as a policy. It was specifically said to the students as a school committee policy.
Can I just make a piece on that?
Yeah, please.
Because policy means something to us. It really doesn't mean anything to anybody out there. They call everything a policy. They, literally, everything is a policy. I'm constantly correcting people like, that is not a policy, that's a procedure. That is not a policy, this is a pilot. That's not a policy, that's a rule, you know, in the handbook. The school committee, policy means something very specific to this governing board, and it should. But your average kind of Joe, Jane, no offense, Jane, on the street, it doesn't, it doesn't mean the same thing to them. Everything's a policy, and it's not. We know that. I just wanted to.
And I think it was, it was corrected that it should not have gone out as, you know, sold as a policy. Because it's not, it's not that at all. We all know that. We're, we're all here on the same committee. We haven't voted for it, on it, you know. So we should all understand that. And that's just not how the process works as we all understand.
Can I ask a question as to how the staff were chosen that were running the pilot? Because I know.
They were asked if they were staff that were interested. And so some of them do the, the challenge we have is some, it's a bit of the Wild West. Some staff do nothing. And then some staff enforce the school rules, some staff don't with cell phones because they don't want to get into it with a kid, student. And some staff bought the little slips. So some staff uses slips. You come in my room, you put your phone in the little, like the little shoe slip thing. And so, you know, the idea came from that kind of, you know, what could we get that would kind of replicate that? And could, you know, at least test it out in a few classrooms and see how it works. The staff volunteered. So from what I understand, the administration at the high school asked, you know, staff, who would be interested in that? And five came forward and volunteered.
So some teachers were already using a slip in their classroom?
Oh, yes, yep. They weren't their little cases, but it was like, you know, like the shoe rack thing that you put them in.
Yeah, I can visualize.
Yeah, so when you, when you walked in the, and you can see them, you'll see them hanging in the classrooms. And it just was a total lack of consistency, which was another issue. Study hall too, I would challenge. I don't think that's what study hall is used for. It wouldn't count on time on learning either, just FYI. If you walk by a study hall, you will see every student in that study hall just scrolling through their phone. It is an epic waste of time. So I would challenge and push back on that too. That is not, that is not them time. That's actually student learning time that counts towards our hours of time on learning. If reviewed, we would not have that qualified. If reviewed, we would not have that qualified for time on learning. I don't think kids need that 45, 50-minute break to scroll on their phones, like, I just, it's an epic waste of time.
I just want to clarify one thing. It's not the policy committee meeting with that group of faculty, though. Erin and I are in the policy committee, we're not meeting with those faculty, it's you and Matt. That's all I want to clarify.
With the, I was looking up some, I was looking up something with my phone, but for the purpose of something else. Okay. I think everybody got my response to the parent. Did I do that right? Okay. So, so simple, yeah, okay. I have another question, I'm not sure if I'm getting the BMR SD SC emails. I don't know if they're getting to me, but that's another, but, so, the, so this came, I think, to a surprise for us over the weekend, right? Someone brought it up to me over the weekend, or maybe Monday.
I think you addressed it in your...
Yeah, was it Friday?
Yeah, it was midweekend.
Thursday or Friday, I think, Tara?
Well, if you sent it an email, then it brought to me over the weekend, then, so...
Yes. It was Thursday.
So this, this is a pilot, in five classes, and, and so there's some miscommunication on the policy, but there is, there is no policy approved by the, by the school committee, but the administration can implement these pilots. So, I mean, you kind of emailed us saying, you know, it went out ahead of the school committee, but...
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dan.
And, and this is a pilot to see what, what the effects would be, and immediately we're having effects, and I think the girls did a great job tonight, and, you know, they did a phenomenal job.
They did.
There were a couple of things that I didn't fully agree with, but the overall presentation and commitment to their, their argument was phenomenal, you know, and, but it's, and like I responded back to that parent, it's just a pilot, we are gonna take that data, like we do every, with everything else, it'll go to the subcommittee, it'll end up coming, you know, you guys will consider what to present, maybe nothing, maybe everything, to the school committee for its consideration, and we'll make a determination there, but we are getting feedback immediately on this, and that's a good thing.
I just think, definitely was an issue last year with parents with the yonder, with the middle school kids, so I can imagine high school is probably gonna be a bigger deal if this hits there.
I don't think there's disagreement among anyone in this district that the yonder pouches were, were an absolute fail.
But I feel like the kids are gonna do the same thing, they're gonna throw an old phone in that box and keep their real phone, like, we're gonna end up with all that stuff.
There's a million things that anybody can do, I mean, you know, back, back when we were going to school, you couldn't chew gum either, and, you know, you used to stick it to the roof of your mouth, there was ways that you got away that were on the rules at all times, so, you know.
There's no tables, there's no gum.
If we can't recognize that having cellphones is a distraction, we know this, I mean, on every level and every facet of life, cellphones are a distraction, they really are. So, you know, and to the students' points, very well taken, that it is not, it is an equity versus equality thing, and, you know, it's, you know, the end, you know, we don't punish everybody for, for the few. I completely agree with that, but we also can't leave the few behind that can't control themselves, because we have an, we have an obligation as a school district to make sure that everyone succeeds. So we have to, we have to look at every, every option. And on the safety side, and this is where, you know, we talked about this just a few minutes ago, you know, it doesn't relate directly, but I mean, the problem was a cellphone being used in relation to the school, which drew the school as a target, and we have to recognize that, we have to recognize that that's, that's a truth. So how do, not saying that that's, you know, that is the larger body of students, but if that's a symptom of the, you know, of the disease, then we have to fix it.
I don't think that's gonna help that kind of fully, because if they can do that after school, or after hours, it's not happening in our classroom.
Absolutely, they can do, they can, I mean, and it can happen, yeah, and there's, then there's no stopping anyone from using any cellphones for video or anything on public grounds anyway, so, I mean, we can't stop it completely, but we can, we, you know, if we can figure out a way to make it better.
The other challenge that may come down is, to every school district, is the Attorney General's, Attorney General's bill that was filed to ban them, like, straight out ban, cellphones, K-12, they're a no-go, no cellphones. So this whole discussion may end up being, you know, kind of a moot point if that law, if that bill passes.
Yep. I think part of what irritated the students that presented tonight, though, was, when it was presented to them in one of their classes, it was, "Oh, we know you guys won't have a problem with this, you're, you're the good kids, you won't have a problem with this, just put your phone in the box, it'll be fine." And to your point, there are ways around it. The kids who can put their phone away during the class period are the kids who will just follow the rules and stick it in the box. The kid who can't control that urge is the kid who's gonna throw an old phone in the box and still have their phone in their pocket. So I think a piece of what they wanted to get across was that, why are we not working on consequence policy, as opposed to the everyone stick it in a box approach?
The turning off before class starts doesn't work?
That's what they're supposed to do then.
They don't do that?
No.
And then what are the consequences for not doing it?
They're taken, and if you go to Linda, see Linda Saloma's office...
Why don't we enforce that?
What we do.
If the kids keep doing it, and...
But it's...
Go look at Linda's desk, it's covered in cellphones.
And it's, and it's a, it's a, it's not an issue to BMR, it's not an issue to BMR, it's an issue countrywide, statewide, hence the Attorney General saying they just need to not be in the schools, period. And, and even then, the kid's gonna find a way to have it in their, you know, the shoe phone, whatever the case may be, but the plain fact of the matter is, we not only have to look at a student's perspective, we have to look at the teacher in the room perspective. It has gotten out of control, you know, "No, I don't have my phone, but I've got my earbuds", you know, the hidden ones that are in the ear, and I'm listening to something that's, you know, put away in my backpack, or thrown in the box but still turned on, you know, it's just if, if the mission of the institution is learning, yes, we have to learn how to control and how to follow guidelines and have consequences for not doing that, but we have to make sure we have an environment where the education material gets across, and it's not getting across to somebody watching a movie while you're trying, you know, while they're supposed to be doing their group think and, and doing their, their group projects and their, you know, interaction. It's not just a student perspective, it's a teacher perspective, it's a learning perspective, it's an outcomes perspective. We just looked at, you know, what are our outcomes, how are we doing? Well, part of the outcomes are impacted by the people who aren't following the rules or are, are lost on their cellphones, so you're right. The, the higher level kids who, who know how to manage and know how to use it as an educational tool are usually the ones who are most impacted by a, a policy, but all means all, and it's our mission to educate the students, not to get them to watch a video or chat with their friends or, or be scrolling.
So the policy subcommittee has a meeting tomorrow anyhow?
Yep.
Okay, so you guys can come back to us with that. Tara, do you have anything else to add for Good and Welfare?
I do.
All right.
Now let's go to the mom, the parent who came about sports. Her issues are valid. Someone breaking in?
Scott's probably finishing off the snow blower.
Scott's probably found another snow blower.
Yeah, his next project.
The town field is, and the wetness, how do you control that? We don't have a domed stadium.
Yeah, I, I don't think, well, yeah.
The town's usually very good at taking care of our fields.
I think her point was that the town didn't even know there were games scheduled.
And then she just, Don, it's Darlene, she needs a little more time to get things under control.
Yep, and that's what I, it... She seemed to be saying, asking, like, "How can we help support her more?" So I know when we talked earlier in the spring season, you did say that you were trying to give her more support.
Yes.
The multiple schedules, there still are some ongoing issues that...
Is it okay to, can I...
Oh, please, yeah, please, please.
Address some of the concerns, because I, so I spoke, that, I don't know if the email went to the school committee, or if the mother, the parent, so the parent called the high school, the one that came this evening, and asked the admin assistant of the high school, "Will you please give me all of the school committee email addresses?" And, you know, Linda said, you know, "Hang on a minute," like, so she called over to my office and said, "I think there might be an issue," is that right?
I don't know, it's a little loud over there.
Oh, Joe's checking, Joe's checking on the, yeah.
Did everybody get that email that Jason's referring to?
I did.
Okay.
It did come to the school committee, maybe you're not on the distribution yet.
I'm not on the school committee email yet.
I don't think I am either.
It doesn't show, we're on breakdown.
I had a conversation with the parent and asked her, and she shared her concerns from the email, Jackie forwarded the email to me, so I had a copy of it, so I could talk to her about all the specific concerns.
Hello? Oh.
And then had shared with her, of course, you know, by all means, you know, you know, please feel free to come to school committee night and share your concerns with the school committee. Are they okay?
It's our director of facilities banging a door trying to get it to lock properly.
I see, oh, okay, good. I asked her how the discussion went with the athletic director, she had said the athletic director's got a lot going on right now, and to which I, I, you know, affirmed, I said, "Yeah, she's very busy, you know, were you able to share these concerns with our athletic director, with the administration at the high school?" I didn't get an answer to that question, so my assume, my assumption was no, that there wasn't a non-discussion with her, maybe there was, but I didn't get a direct response to that, which is okay. So I did discuss the concerns with the athletic director, so I will just share with you what she shared with me regarding the parent's concerns. The varsity coach had offered to move the L-screen down for pitching and just hasn't gotten around to it yet, which is fine, that's okay, it's not his responsibility, so Scott's actually gonna take care of that. I know that was one issue that was brought up. The scheduling piece that was mentioned, Arbiter automatically syncs with SportsU, so those both will match, but what Darlene shared was, when a game is canceled because of weather or the field was frozen, which was the case, before they update on the website, she tries to rebook the makeup game. And so sometimes it takes her and the AD, she said upwards till, you know, two, three o'clock in the afternoon of that given day to try to update, so she said they're not gonna match immediately. Arbiter and SportsU will say it right away when the game's taken off or the meet's canceled or whatever, it gets updates immediately, but our website won't match that. So we just have to make some decisions if we want to keep using those, you know, those different venues or not. She shared for JV, that JV teams only receive the jersey tops.
And no pants.
That is what they have had for uniforms over the past few years, so, you know, she said she's happy to do something different, she just wasn't aware of that.
Do we still rotate purchasing of uniforms?
Sort of.
Kind of.
When they aren't lost and have to be bought and then found.
It's just being put together.
Different ADs, it's not her fault for that.
A new schedule of, right?
Yeah, of uniformation.
Uniforms, literally.
So those are just some of the concerns, so Scott's taking care of the L-screen, oh, and the scheduling issue, this was an important one. So Scott and Adam from Blackstone do the field lining together, and so she thought Scott was giving the schedule to Adam because they line the fields. So she didn't realize that she was supposed to give Adam the schedule, so she did, she gave it to him, and she's like, "Well, now I know, I just thought," because they were lining the fields, that Scott had given the schedule.
How does Scott get her schedule?
They meet every week, Scott, Joe, and Darlene meet weekly.
Which one does Scott follow? I'm sorry, I'm wondering what, yeah, because some, because the schedules, like, the one on the district is different from, like you said, for your points that you said to Arbiter, so which one does Scott get?
He follows the, so she, Darlene updates that schedule, sometimes daily, depending on the weather, you know, if games get canceled, she updates Joe and Scott and the high school administration when there are changes.
So Scott works off of what Darlene tells him the schedule's gonna be that way? Printed schedule.
Right.
He's not looking at a website.
No, 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 yeah.
No, because Scott would maintain the ball fields at the high school, I would imagine, and then...
And then him and Adam work together to do the lining.
Yeah, pretty much does he, yeah, Adam will prep the field, I think Scott does the lining with, yeah.
So she just thought that Scott had given Adam the schedule, that's all. And that schedule's gonna keep changing, because we're gonna get rain, and I don't know, we had sleet the other day when I got off the highway coming up here, so, I mean, we're gonna keep getting weather events, so that's gonna keep shifting.
So the uniforms, the bottoms for JV's, they just don't?
They just wear their own baseball pants, and that's been the case for several years with my experience with my kids. Varsity has pants, but not the right sizes, another issue. Not really anything we can control, every kids, every year they're gonna be different sizes, so you get what you get.
I would think it's probably easier when you supply your own pants at that point, then, especially pants.
Pants are hard.
A jersey you can make work.
One of the players actually decided not to play, so Will is now out of a men's large, and he's in a men's medium, he's in eighth grade. It's a very big pants. Just kind of funny.
You can't take them in for long?
He cinched them up, he made them work.
You can't do anything to them, because they have to be returned.
I can't do them.
No custom tailoring?
What was the other?
Do some updates on that.
Yeah, I guess I, just, as of this afternoon, the webs, the website still didn't match towards you, so, but that was just the varsity baseball.
And that was the only reason why I was asking what Scott gets? I didn't realize, she meets with him weekly, but if he's looking at that, it might not match that.
He actually meets twice a week, I meet with all of them on Thursdays, Scott does usually meet on Mondays, also just him and Darlene.
And we have, Darlene is on our central office leadership team, so every Monday, our core team, Joe, Jill, myself, Mary, Scott, Darlene, we meet every Monday morning at 8:30, like, you know, clockwork, and we run through our priorities for the week, we cross, you know, kind of cross-check with each other to make sure the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, it's a really structured meeting, Dan Saltzman, our tech consultant's also there, so we have the entire team around the table.
Doesn't the, so our school schedule doesn't, it's not linked to Arbiter? So Arbiter and, what is it, what's it called?
Arbiter is linked to SportsU.
Those are linked together, so why don't we eliminate the one that's causing the problem?
Because it may be the most accurate.
No, and that's what we were trying to say, it's too many schedules, too many pieces.
Well, those are on a daily, she's changing those, and, you know, it's just not getting updated quick enough on Arbiter, which you, you can't make it any faster.
Yep.
There's no control.
Yep. Again, why the kids use their phones in schools, they check their sports schedule for the day.
They actually got a notification, well, they might not, we see it as parents, so I'm sure it goes to their phone, too, because they have to download SportsU, but they actually got a notification during the school hours that the JV coach was informed that the game was not, was, am I saying it right, not away and it was home, or vice versa?
Change of venue.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was back, it was at home, it was not at Muggs.
Yes, yes, so that notification gets to the SportsU app during the school day.
It's probably from Arbiter.
It's, it was a message from the coach saying he was just notified from the, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm not familiar with it. Familiar with Arbiter, but not the SportsU. And I'm just, I do, my email went to my...
Junk.
Junk, so, my BMR SD SC, so, I mean, in the, in the, in the email, Tara just pointed out to me, access to the restrooms at Roosevelt, so...
Now that they have the schedule, they can do it.
Yeah, and so, and, and I'm sure Scott knows this, but Celeste is very responsive as well, so, like, whatever you guys need on these things, but I think now that it's all, yeah, there has to be a line of communications with the town and the district, and I think this exercise is cleaning that line up, and I think Darlene getting familiar with the off-district sites now, assuming that Scott was making that, that communication, so I can assure you, so the toxin recs and blacks on in the last two days, but my communications have been very responsive to, you know, to help out the district, and I even saw the superintendent there this afternoon, hanging around the town hall.
Carrying the baseball bags for the kids.
Carrying duffel bags and baseball bats. I may, I may not have taken a picture, though.
Oh, God.
And he stopped me from responding to a Facebook post regarding the override in Millville, And he stopped me from responding to a Facebook post regarding the override in Millville, so I may have, he may have saved me some political points there.
I could see the face of his mission.
And then I just have one more. I don't know, Jason, have you heard anything about the school lunches with the whole federal stuff? Like, will we, that continue next year?
As of now, yeah. All systems go for now.
For?
The universal lunch.
Free, free school lunches.
Is that state law? That's a state law.
Yeah, but I didn't know if it would impact if we heard, that trickle-down happens yet.
There'll be no impact whatsoever.
The budget, the state budget picks up the difference of what the federal budget doesn't pay for.
Well, well, the state budget, the taxpayers pay for those lunches in Massachusetts. They're reimbursed. It's a reimbursement, man, so we, that's a law in Massachusetts. The legislature would have to go back and repeal that law.
I thought it passes a law.
Yeah, and so in 2023, I think it was summer of 23, so there is no way the legislature, no matter what happens in the federal government, is going to say, "We changed our mind. We're not giving kids lunches."
But the budget line is the difference between what the federal government does not cover, what it costs. That's all I was trying to say.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm agreeing. I think it was 3.4 million for the entirety of the state on, on the federal contribution, so. That would challenge that was going to school children to begin with, so. Anyhow, moving on, getting back to the, the other thing, though. We had discussions on, on, and knowing that Darlene had her hands full coming into this year. We do have survey, do we, do we have surveys, we, you know, after, was it mentioned after the seasons? And have we gotten any results from those on, on the, that season?
We do player-parent surveys on the season.
Okay. So we did the spring, fall and winter seasons. We should have results from those surveys?
It's, yeah, it started with winter. I'm not sure where the survey was.
We did fall once, too.
Oh, we did, okay.
And so that's just, is parents and students not coaches?
Nope, there's no...
Okay. Whatever tools we can give her for feedback or whatever, I am all in favor of it, and any support that we can give her. It's a learning curve, just coming into the district. Never mind the nuances of Blackstone and Millville. And then now the parks, the facilities in Blackstone and, and Blackstone owned and Blackstone and district owned, so.
Even as far as the uniforms, I mean, I went in and saw what I thought was one storage space of uniforms. And then discovered that there literally, there were pieces of uniforms shoved in numerous spots all throughout BMR. Like, there was nothing that made sense. And it might be like three softball jerseys over here, but six softball jerseys were in a different closet. And then there were three pairs of baseball pants. Like, there was no rhyme or reason to any of it, so.
So that's not on Darlene, like, that's what she came into, so.
So hopefully, though, I know she has said that there's like, that's, she's got like bins that she's trying to now track the seasons in. So hopefully that won't be an issue in the future, that it's...
There are no retro uniforms available that you talked about a year ago?
She cleaned out all these. Now we'll be able to go in and see.
We may not have to sell them. We can reuse them. They're back in style.
They will be, yeah.
Tara Locken, do you have anything to add for your Good and Welfare?
That's my three for today, for the whole last year, the promising future.
I want to circle back to the surveys.
All right, we're going to, we're going to move on to now Tara Scobie's Good and Welfare.
No, we, we do get, the, she did implement the surveys for parents and players, and they are anonymous. Maybe we do get a coach one. Maybe we, that way they can give some input on what the district they think can improve.
Or offer support, yeah, yeah. All right, well, we can, I don't know if that needs to be in agenda item. I don't know.
I can ask her to put one together.
Okay. And thank her for being here this evening, too, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did say her.
Yeah, I think people should know that she was here if there were any...
She's working very hard.
Yeah.
Very, very hard.
Okay, is anything to add to that? Chuck, you might as well throw in something, though, track and field.
There you go. You got Scott.
I don't figure you'd top it off. Chuck's easy. He just wants a couple pieces of plywood. Matt, all set for anything to add? Over Carrie or Jane?
Just happy to be back.
We're happy to have you back. Nice to see a smiling face back on the school committee.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Okay, I'd like to thank the student representative, the student presenters this evening, both in, 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 I always say, public forum, as well as with the principal of, of the high school and, Ms. Roberts, is it?
Yes.
And the town of Millville's success with the acquiring that grant, our auditors for giving us a clean bill of health. Mr. Superintendent and Jill for your lovely presentation this evening. And the engagement with everybody, and I look forward to a good, productive, positive year. Congratulations, Carrie and Jane. And I also would like to thank Lindsay for putting a name in there and running a campaign in the interest of the district. Thank her for her efforts in bringing attention to the school district and the all the good things that we do, so. With that said, we are not going on adjournment here. We're going to go into executive session, and we'll adjourn, we're not coming back to TV. We will adjourn coming out of executive session.
It's now when we tell Tara that she was...
Yeah, I heard. I slipped her a note when she came in. I got a note passed, so I wish I came with a notebook, but...
Oh, no, you don't. It's recorded. All right, so we'll move into the...
Doing roll call, roll call?
Oh, yes, all right. Well, the secretary interrupted me when I was on a motion, so I'll take a motion to go into executive session with the success of strategy, respect, respect to collective bargaining, and not to reconvene over the session. Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. I'll do a roll call. Jane?
Aye.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Dan is a yes.